This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 within city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card for those in City Hall or emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se es solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuyia, et cetera treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And then in just a few minutes, we will have our Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. But first, announcements and haikus. Applications continue to be accepted for the city's Climate Action Committee. The committee will work to strengthen the city's climate goals. Visit the city's homepage to find a link to the application. Applications will be accepted until October 13th. The library's Fall Author Series continues Wednesday, October 15th from 6:00 to 7:15 PM with journalist Margaret Juhei Lee. Her debut book, Starry Field: A Memoir of Lost History, weaves together her family's story against the backdrop of Korea's tumultuous modern history with a powerful question at its heart: Can we ever separate ourselves from our family's past? And if the answer is yes, should we? Volunteers are needed at monthly restoration events on Elk Rock Island. The next is on Saturday, October 18th, from 9:30 AM to noon. Volunteers remove ivy and invasive plants and pick up litter. Volunteers meet at Spring Park at 19th Avenue and Sparrow Street at 9:30 AM. And I will say that's the October 18th, but more immediately, this Saturday, October 11th, there's a work party at 9:30 AM at Minthorne Springs for anyone who wants to come out, park near the Planet Fitness, and walk across 37th Avenue and come see all the exciting stuff that's going on in Minthorne Springs. Early design work for the central segment of the Monroe Street Greenway has begun. This segment starts at 21st Avenue, jogs to Campbell Street, then to Oak Street, and back to Monroe Street. Starts at 21st Avenue? Is that right? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it starts at Willard and then goes on 21st.
Okay.
And then down Washington. It's kind of a, rather than going on Main Street, which is what they've typically done, it's going behind.
Okay.
By El Puente and Milwaukee Elementary.
Okay. The community is invited to attend an open house on Wednesday, October 22nd, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM to see design plans, ask questions, and give feedback. Refreshments will be provided. The event takes place at the Public Safety Building at 3200 Southeast Harrison Street. Stop by and ask the city manager questions, raise concerns, or just find out more about the city at the next City Manager Open Door Session on Friday, October 24th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM at City Hall. Downtown businesses will open their doors for little ghosts and goblins with candy and fun surprises on Saturday, October 25th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. Trick or Treat on Main Street returns with a long list of participating businesses. And while you're downtown that day, be sure to also stop by the Letting Library for Halloween craft. For more information about these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at MilwaukeeOregon.gov or call 503-786-7555. I also had a late-breaking announcement, yes, that just came in today. So some people in the community have participated in the first round of the Nature in Neighborhoods Community Choice Grants, which is a metro-led process for awarding, Metro will award $2 to $3 million, I think is the total, in grants for projects around Milwaukee, Gladstone, Oregon City, and the unincorporated areas in between. And now it's a voting phase. It's the first of two voting phases. So now they're putting out, putting out a list of projects and asking people to vote to help prioritize what people are most interested in. I have not had time today to go look at it myself, but I will definitely be doing that over the days ahead. And that 3D barcode there on the slide is where you can go visit, but I think you will probably also be able to find that info popping up on Facebook and Instagram pages as we try and get the word out to more people. The city park staffer, Adam Moore, did send it out to people on the parks mail list. But we just want to try and get it out as widely as possible so that people know that they can vote on their favorite projects. And there are a lot of cool projects around Milwaukee. Okay, and with that, we'll go to the haiku. This was submitted by Hamid Shabata Bennett after he saw some damage to our pride flag. Pride flag, which is a banner on the Cronberg Bridge, has taken a little bit of abuse over the past few years. And I think we're going to renew, revive it in some way over this winter. Is that right, city manager? Sorry. The pride flag, we're...
Yes, we are, and we're going to revamp it. It's been pressure washed and cleaned several times and needs a refresh, but we've got plans to do it.
Yeah, which is great. So Hamid's haiku. "Milwaukee Pride Flag, Waving Steady in Summer Breeze: Be Your Fab Self." And I want to also put out, give a shout out and thank you to Hamid and to Jennifer, who's here in the room with us today, because they got the word out there about the need for haiku. And now I'm stocked up with haiku through March. But if you've got a haiku, especially if you've got a seasonal type one, feel free to send me your haiku. We will work you into the twice-a-month haiku reading at the city council meetings. And with that, I will, we move on to proclamations, of which we have two tonight. And the first one is for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I will have, ask our city recorder Scott Stoffer to introduce that one for us.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty. Pleasure to be here to introduce that one to council and the public. The city has celebrated and marked Indigenous Peoples' Day officially by proclamation. This is probably the fourth or fifth time the council's read it, but certainly in city values and respects the relationships that this community has with the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ronde and other bodies that represent the indigenous folks, the Clackamas people who lived in this area before the arrival of European-American settlers in the 1840s. But I wanted to touch on a particularly cool project that the city's working on right now with the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ronde. As councilor remembers, a few, last year, the city signed an intergovernmental agreement with the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ronde for the first Fish Herons Project, which will bring three heron sculptures to Milwaukee Bay Park on a seasonal basis to coincide with the running of the salmon when the herons stalk the rivers and monitor the return of the salmon to the Willamette River between March and May of every year. So that IGA was signed last year. City staff and tribal staff have been working together since then to get a contractor in place. The city's part of that agreement is to pay for the installation of the plinths, the concrete and metal bases that these artworks will sit on. And thanks to the really good work of Camilo and our city engineer Jen Garberly, we've got a contractor in place. And we had our first onsite meeting with tribal staff. Parks District staff was there. And so we're underway, we're planning. The public will probably start to see some minor construction work in the park in the next two months with the pouring of concrete and placement of those posts. And then the tribal representative last year indicated that this week they would release funding to three artists for the initial artworks to be, starting to be constructed and built with the idea they'll be placed in March. So there will definitely be more discussion and announcements about programming around the placement of that and the ceremonial aspect of having those sculptures in our park for three months of the year. But really good news, super appreciate the partnership with the Grand Ronde. And with that, Mayor Beatty, I think we're ready for the proclamation.
Okay, well, thank you. That's all good news, exciting to hear it going forward. Whereas the city of Milwaukee recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the lands known as the Americas have lived on these lands since time immemorial. And whereas the city wishes to honor the fact that the community of Milwaukee is built on the traditional homelands of the Clackamas people and are part of the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ronde, which includes more than 30 tribes and bands, and affirms the legal rights of the nine federally recognized tribal nations in the state of Oregon and all indigenous peoples everywhere. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas the city, this city is committed to protecting and advocating for justice, human rights, and the dignity of all people who live, work, and visit our community, and to supporting the principles contained in the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples endorsed by the United States on December 16th, 2010. And whereas the declaration recognizes the right of indigenous peoples to the dignity and diversity of their cultures, traditions, histories, and aspirations, which shall be appropriately reflected in education and public information, and places an obligation on states to take effective measures in consultation and cooperation with the indigenous peoples concerned to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination and to promote tolerance, understanding, and good relations among indigenous peoples and all other segments of society. And whereas the city wishes to recognize the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day as an opportunity to reflect on the ongoing struggles of indigenous peoples of this land, to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the indigenous peoples of our region, and to stand with indigenous peoples everywhere. Now therefore, I, Lisa Beatty, mayor of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, to hereby proclaim October 13th, 2025, to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in Milwaukee. Thank you. Okay, and then our second proclamation today is noting the 200th and 250th anniversary of the United States Navy. And we have our very own retired naval officer, Councilor Robert Massey, to introduce it.
We don't normally do this every year, but I thought 250 was worth our proclamation. Before we get to that proclamation, I just want to share some background about my involvement in the Navy. I used to really enjoy my uncle telling me about his experience in the Navy during the Second World War. Shortly after Pearl Harbor, when he was 17 years old, he got my grandparents to sign a waiver so that he could join up right away. And off he went. And it didn't take long before he was at the Battle of the Coral Sea. And his ship, the Yorktown, was heavily damaged at the Battle of the Coral Sea. They limped back to Pearl Harbor, and they thought that they had a couple of months of work to be done on the ship. And Admiral Nimitz came on board, and he said, "We're going to do what we can in 72 hours because you're sailing again to a little-known atoll called Midway." And so he joined the Navy when he was 17, and by the time he was 18, he would survive heavy battle damage on his ship at the Battle of the Coral Sea. And his ship was sunk at Midway. During the process, the task force, including the ships, including the Yorktown, basically turned the tide in the Battle of the Pacific by sinking four Imperial Japanese carriers in the course of the One Day. It was the most pivotal moment in the Pacific War. And I was enthralled when he told those stories. He maintained contact with his fellow shipmates in their anti-aircraft gun crew throughout their lives. They never missed a Yorktown reunion. And what they had was what we talk about here sometimes. They had a community. And I was always impressed by what they did because they were just ordinary people doing extraordinary things in trying times. So fast forward about 35 years, and I'm a newly commissioned officer in the United States Navy. And there's a senior non-commissioned officer who takes me under his wing. And thank goodness, because I needed some guidance and some structure, and he helped me get it. And Senior Chief Pellet, with a last name like that, he had to be in the Navy, right? He kept me from making bad decisions, but more importantly, he taught me how to make good decisions. A few years after that, I came to work with a person that I worked with three times during my naval career, Admiral David Robinson. When I first met Admiral Robinson, I could see the scars along his jawline. And I saw that he wore a ribbon on his dress blues that I had never seen before. I found out it was the Navy Cross, it's the second highest medal for valor. And if you read his citation, he was captain of a patrol gun boat in Vietnam. He beached the patrol gun boat to put the patrol gun boat between the North Vietnamese and a group of Marines who were doing amphibious landing in I Corps. And he was seriously wounded, but protected the Marines from that. And I was impressed by that. I went on to serve with him again when I was the executive officer of the Guiding Missile Destroyer in the Mediterranean in the height of the Cold War. It seemed like I spent a lot of my life in the Mediterranean and the Norwegian Sea tracking Soviet submarines. And I threw some delight in making life miserable for those Soviet submarine crews. Because I always wanted the captain of those Soviet submarines to be thinking, "Does he know where I am? Does he have contact on me?" And we did. Not only we had contact on him, we had a firing solution on him because if the time came, I wanted at a moment's notice to put a Mark 46 torpedo into his pressure hull. And, you know, that was one of the reasons, one of many reasons the Soviet empire fell during those days. I went on to serve with Admiral Robinson again. He kept moving on and up, and he became the Surface Force Commander of the Pacific Fleet. And he controlled all of the assignments. And I was given the assignment, given the charge to take over an assault aircraft carrier. It was 900 feet long, it had a displacement of 42,000 tons. It was a big ship. Had 35 aircraft, but more importantly, had a crew of 1,200 sailors and 1,800 embarked Marines. And it was an honor and pleasure to serve in that capacity. And so the Navy's meant a lot to me. And I kind of wanted to give that background about how I came to serve in an institution that I love and I wanted to honor on their 250th birthday. So I will now read the proclamation, Scott. Yeah, thank you. Whereas on October 13th, 1775, a resolution of the Continental Congress established what is now the United States Navy with a swift sailing ship to carry 10 carriage guns and a proportionable number of swivels with 80 men, and to be fitted with all possible dispatch for a cruise of three months. And whereas the United States of America boasts the world's finest navy, which has guaranteed the freedom of the seas for over 80 years, and on October 13th, 2025, the nation will join the courageous men and women of the sea service in celebrating 250 years of advancing American foreign policy and, when necessary, defeating the foes of freedom. And whereas on October 13th, the city of Milwaukee proudly recognizes the dedication and bravery by the sailors of the Navy who have given unselfishly of themselves in the high seas and the sacrifice and support of their families during frequent separations from their loved ones. And whereas the residents of Milwaukee wish all active and veteran shipmates a happy 250th anniversary, and may the United States Sea Service continue to enjoy fair winds at following seas. Mayor Beatty, you have the con.
I have the con. Now therefore, I, Lisa Beatty, mayor of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, to hereby proclaim October 13th, 2025, as United States Navy 250th Anniversary Day as our sailors stand to watch around the clock on the seven seas. Thank you, Councilor Massey. It was lovely to hear your, your history there with the Navy. All right, that's it for proclamations this week. Now we have the City of Peace Proposal being introduced by Councilor Adam Gostrobadi and Council President Will Anderson with a visitor from the Rotary, I believe, or maybe two visitors from the Rotary.
Oh yeah, thank you, Mayor. Is on the council liaison to Rotary. And one of the best parts about Rotary, being the liaison, is attending the meetings and seeing the great work that our Rotarians do. Not just on meeting days, but every day, not only around our city, but in our community as general and all around the world, really. Mr. Potts, who is a member of the Milwaukee Rotary Club, had expressed interest in sharing a potential achievement for the city, really, and to be designated as a City of Peace. And I think right now, with things going on not only around the world, but in our own backyards, this is something that's of great importance. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Mr. Potts.
Thank you very much, Adam. Ms. Mayor, esteemed city councilors, thank you so much for this opportunity to discuss the potential for the city of Milwaukee, Oregon being registered as an international city of peace. Army... Oh, thank you. I'm new to this. Okay. Peace Building Committee, oh, by the way, you should have a packet of information in front of each of you. I'd just like to go through it real quickly here. I am the Peace Building Chair of the Rotary Club of Milwaukee. And our Peace Building Committee has proposed to our Board of Directors that we begin the process of designating the city of Milwaukee, Oregon as an international city of peace. This is a program supported by Rotary's peace clubs as well as other organizations. The board unanimously approved the idea. We would like the city of Milwaukee, Oregon to also approve the application to become an international city of peace. There are nearly 450 international cities of peace spanning 70 countries and six continents. To be considered an international city of peace, To be considered an international city of peace, the following must be provided on the registration website. And I've given you the website on the page there. The contact is a primary liaison between Milwaukee and the International Cities of Peace Organization. Would be me, I'm volunteering for that. General information about our community and the primary liaison between Milwaukee and the Association of Member International Cities of Peace, me, will provide information about items the Peace Building and Vocational Service Committees of the Rotary Club of Milwaukee have performed around the Milwaukee area and offer other members of the Board an opportunity to provide their input. The City of Milwaukee will also be able to provide input. I have here some information about our peace building efforts. And on the second page, our vocational service efforts. I'll let you guys read through those at your leisure. A vision, mission, and goals for our initiative. I propose the Board participating, the Board of the Rotary Club of Milwaukee, participating in this vision and mission statement with me leading the effort. And the City of Milwaukee will also have the opportunity to help with this vision and mission statement. Two others as signatories with emails, these will not be seen on our profile. President Whitney, our current president of the Rotary Club of Milwaukee, has volunteered to be one of the signatories. And I obviously cannot be one. So our immediate past president, Rosie, will be the second signatory. We will submit one to three photos. And if you look at the package, you'll see the two photos that I am proposing. And if the city would like to propose a third photo that represents our efforts for peace in the City of Milwaukee, then we will add that one as well. We also have an option of up to two documents. And they will tell, they will outline information about the Rotary Club of Milwaukee's current and historical contributions to the community. And we're also going to provide the city a chance to provide the second document that they would like to. And I'd like to read our mission statement for the Rotary Club of Milwaukee. To honor the Rotary ideal of service above self, the Milwaukee Rotary Club strengthens both local and worldwide community by sporting programs that enhance the health, safety, education, self-sufficiency, success, and well-being of people. After completing the draft of the items above, I propose submitting those proposed items to the Board of the Rotary Club of Milwaukee as well as to a representative of the City Council for approval for submitting the application. There are multiple levels of the registration for the International Cities of Peace. I am proposing the first level, of which there is no charge to the city or anyone. The second page here, or the second document, outlines a little bit of what the International Cities of Peace Services are offered to members, or member cities. And the third item gives information from that website about their mission statement. And also, just to throw this out real quickly, I'm not sure if everybody has heard this, but we have been added to the Oregon Peace Trail, which was originally started at the end of the Oregon Trail at Oregon City, and then went all the way down I-5 and to Ashland. And since then, it has been extended up through Milwaukee into Portland. And they're looking at actually extending it up into Washington as well as down into California. Do you have any questions?
Well, I will, I guess I have a couple of questions. First, I want to say I really commend you. I know you have been working on peace initiatives with the Rotary for a long time. I remember being, I think I was still on planning commission, maybe, when you came around for the first peace poll. And the peace poll at that time was a new concept to me, but I have now seen them in Australia, Costa Rica, seen them in many places on my travels. They don't always, they're not always white, they don't always look like the ones we have here. But there's some variation on that in multiple languages. So I applaud your commitment to that cause. In terms of what you're asking us for tonight, I feel like we all got a packet that we didn't get a chance to see. I don't know if these guys got a chance to see it and want to speak to it or think that we need to take this back and come back at another time to discuss, or how do you?
I mean, I've looked at it, and if you guys want to have a second to, or not a second, but take time to look at it. It's pretty straightforward. It's nothing in there that is going to require, you know, a staff lift or administrative lift, really. I think it's pretty clear-cut on this. But obviously, this is new information for the rest of you here. If you'd like to make a decision or even directing staff to work with Mr. Potts moving this forward, I'm okay with that.
I just clarify, would you be willing to be the council liaison for the City of Peace?
Yeah, absolutely.
I really appreciate, Dave, like I remember saying, all the work that you're doing, and thank you. We've got Rotary folks in the audience here tonight. I do appreciate, our club is very active.
Thank you very much.
I guess I'd turn to the city manager to see if she feels like the city's had a chance to look through this, or do we, should we take a pause and come back to it next meeting?
Thanks, Mayor. I think from the, from a city operational standpoint, I don't have any qualms about this. I do appreciate David reached out to me quite a while ago, and I mentioned it needs to be a council conversation. But, you know, I think we've clearly considered other similar types of things, becoming a tree city or a bee city that have a lot more of an ask or a lift from the city. And this one, again, I appreciate David's really doing all of that. So it's more if it is, if it affirms and aligns with the city's values, I don't have concerns or need to consider it longer, but I respect if you all feel you need to.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I read the package that was on the table, on the dice here before the council meeting kicked off. And I'm perfectly satisfied to move forward.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, David. I've been a part of putting peace polls in in various places. And it's a really, it's a really nice unifying impact for a community. And I think the world could use a little bit more peace right now.
Amen.
So in favor.
Okay, so do we need a motion, I guess? You want to, you guys want to make a motion?
What is the motion the package for?
To sign on to, yeah, yeah.
I move for the City of Milwaukee to sign on as an international city of peace.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the City of Milwaukee to sign on as an international city of peace with the assistance of Mr. Potts to get us there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard, passes unanimously. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, Ms.
While we have our wonderful Rotarians here, may I just remind you, we have two seats left at the Boots and Crystals Gala now Friday. I will be there, three of you, four of you, I think, will be there, so. Counselor Stafford, don't mess up.
And she's the one with boots. I'm going to come in and see if I, is a rent boot. I don't have those either. Okay. All right. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community comments on city business that is not on the agenda. Before we begin, is there follow-up from the September 16th comments, Saber?
Thank you, Mayor. There were, there's no comments from that meeting to follow up on, but we did receive two pieces of correspondence in between that meeting and now that I'd like to briefly address, they were included in your packet. The first was a letter from Diana Schaefer referring to traffic conditions and a fatal crash unfortunately on River Road, and asking sort of what is the city's response to speeding and unsafe conditions on the McLaughlin Corridor. We completely agree, the crash that occurred on August 31st of this year is absolutely tragic. In this case, it was not just a matter of speeding. The person was unfortunately high on methamphetamine, ran a red light during low traffic time at night. As much as I like to believe that any efforts we can take in enforcement could stop all crashes, sadly, I think this one was just a truly tragic event. I have spoken with our police department, 99E is the corridor that we patrol the most and absolutely agree that it is one of our lately safe corridors. Upon receiving this message, the captain, Captain Cheragino and I had to discuss, and we actually increased patrols on 99E. We also are confident and looking forward to the implementation of the red light and speed on green program that we're planning to launch next year, which would include 99E, because again, speed is a significant factor of safety there. So again, we can't, we can't control for every terrible incident, but we absolutely hear Ms. Schaefer's concerns and I take them seriously. I also just want to note, one of the things in that comment was about what Ms. Schaefer perceived as a dismissive response from a police officer. And speaking for myself, Captain Cheragino and Chief Burdick, I just want to say that that's unacceptable by our standards. While we didn't, while the letter did not name who the officer was, Captain Cheragino took it upon himself immediately upon receiving it to send a letter to the entire police department reiterating his expectations and standards of customer service. While yes, it is true, we can't solve every single challenge, we absolutely can always engage, hear the concerns of our community and take them seriously. And we're really sorry if that's not the standard that we met in this case. The second letter that we received was from an anonymous sender about a variety of concerns around residences and establishments along Lake Road, things about commercial buildings, burning in backyards, et cetera. So just a few quick updates there. There is no burning allowed right now at all in Plaquemines County. And it's illegal in all of Oregon to burn garbage. All complaints related to burning should be directed to DEQ, but upon receiving this, we will, we will work to get more information out to the public via social media and the pilot, sharing what to do if you do notice illegal burning. There were some code enforcement issues on Lake Road and Boss, and those have been dealt with now by code enforcement. We appreciate the community bringing those to our attention, and we'll continue to monitor the property. And then we, there were some concerns about loud mufflers, which we very much share. The challenge with noise is it's so annoying, and it's also very tricky to enforce. Because unless you can really understand where that person creating that noise lives, it's very hard to follow up on. So it's a bit of a needle in a haystack, but we'll continue to, please do continue to let us know if you have concerns, and we're always happy to look into them. Finally, last thing, reminder from Captain Cheragino, everything mentioned, if you have concerns, it's always helpful to have an address when folks want to provide code concerns to our attention. That helps us address them much more quickly.
Yeah, there was a lot of vagueness in this letter in terms of the properties in question. There was a question I had in that, which is the thing about the mufflers, which is, I mean, I remember, you know, in the 80s, like loud cars, loud cars was a thing. And then it seemed like it kind of went away, and now it seems like it's come back. Has the law changed about what's allowable in terms of the amount of noise generated by cars? Or is it just like a lot of people who are doing self-improvement, self-improvements of their cars?
It's a great question, and I don't know the answer to. I would love to. But I feel like I've seen the same trend.
Yeah.
And now we both have TVs that are so quiet. The really loud mufflers.
It really does, I mean, I have noticed it since, probably the last two or three summers, that loud cars seem to be a thing that they weren't 10 years ago. So I was curious about that. Okay. With that, so I do have two, I have three yellow cards, but one is about a later, oh, two of them are about later items, okay. I wasn't actually intending to take the public testimony during that, but okay. So I have one for community comments. For those in person who wish to speak, please submit a yellow comment card found on the table. If you are on Zoom, please choose the raise hand reaction to alert staff that you wish to speak. And when instructed to, click the microphone button to unmute yourself. If you are calling in through Zoom and would like to make a comment, dial star nine to raise your hand. You may also submit a comment via email to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during community comments may be new, this is not the time for discussion. The city manager will respond at the next meeting to comments that require follow-up. So I have one commenter, Deborah, is it Doris? Okay, Deborah, please come forward and hit the little buttons so that the red light comes on.
Thank you, I won't bother reading this because I know all of you got a copy of this. And so I, I'm not quite sure what you just said about giving comment, but I thought it would yield the floor. And I noticed that Brent from the library is here too, and he's welcome to make comment about the situation.
Well, we did get something in writing, and we got it fairly close to meeting time, so I don't know if everyone got a chance to read it. But yeah, typically, we give you the three minutes to repeat, say whatever you'd like to say. And then at the next meeting, the city manager responds. I mean, we're not breaking with that tradition today, so I don't expect Brent or the city manager to comment, correct?
Correct, Mayor, I'll plan to respond at the next meeting, October 21st meeting.
Okay, so if you'd like to take three minutes to discuss it, you are welcome to do so? Or we could just rest on the written submission, which will go in our record?
The intention was just to provide information and not necessarily make comment beyond that, so I'll yield the floor to.
Okay, counsel, okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the City Council's September 2nd, 2025 work session and September 2nd, 2025 regular session, and the motion to approve an Oregon liquor and cannabis commission application for Premier Cruise, 11812 Stanley Avenue, new license. Does any council member wish to remove the consent agenda item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Okay, with that, we move on to our naming policy. And for that, it's our Equity and Inclusion Coordinator Gabriela Santoyo-Gutierrez and Parks and Green Space Development Manager Adam Moore. Okay. Thank you, City Council and Mayor Beatty, for having us here tonight. Adam and I are excited to share an update on our completed draft of the citywide naming policy. For tonight's update, we'll recap the policy purpose, report who were the people involved, and what did our timeline look like? Thank you. All right, now that the slide is on track, back, okay? We'll recap the policy purpose, we'll report who were the people involved and what our timeline looked like. This will follow also with a high-level overview of what the naming policy looks like, and the process itself, as well as its partnered policy for memorial and donations. Then we'll open it up for larger discussion and feedback, and how we can improve the policy. And some of those comments we've already received before.
And some of those comments we've already received beforehand, but this is great for me to do so as well. Okay, with that, I'll transition it over to my colleague Adam Moore to provide more information about the background and the need for the naming policy itself.
Good evening, council. So the two policies that you see before you are community-led policies that Gabriella and I facilitated over the last seven months or so. The purpose of this policy is to create a systematic process for naming or renaming city facilities, parks and green spaces. As we worked with the community groups, which are made up of members of both the Equity Steering Committee and the Parks and Rec Board, we determined that we needed to expand that scope a little bit. And so that's why instead of just writing a naming policy, we also have a memorial and donation policy to go along with it. The key focus for our work was to inject equity into the process for naming or renaming assets and to fill in gaps from the existing two thousand policy. Part of the motivation from this comes from work that the city has been doing, where we had requests to name specific amenities inside parks or discussions with staff about the potential for, for naming rights based upon donations. And that was a key missing feature inside of the two thousand policy. And so we put those conversations on pause until we had an opportunity to write this new policy. A lot of the motivation for starting up this, this policy now is that we just completed building three new parks. Two of them are just known by their street names. Where those street names come from, we're not exactly sure. But there's been a desire over the last few years to give El Flor and Bowman Bray Park some intentional names that fit the community and the community's values. And we didn't want to do that until we wrote this new policy. See that?
Yeah, I think just to add, and you can touch on this a little bit too, there was for sure some negative impact not having had a policy or even awareness that the policy existed itself. This stalled projects or prevented meaningful ways of honoring community members. And this extended even to the library, library foundation, Parks and Parks Foundation.
And so, as I mentioned, this was a community-led policy drafting. We invited the Parks and Rec Board and Equity Steering Committee to select their own members to join Gabriella and I for what was supposed to be just a six-month process. Obviously, we've got really into the nuts and bolts of all of this and had some really great discussions early on with our committee. But ultimately, we wound up with Gary Klein and Max Pennick from the Parks and Rec Board and Anessa Porzanowski and Shayna Justice, working with us from the Equity Steering Committee. These volunteers put in a tremendous amount of effort, not just coming to, or not just going to their existing committee or board commitments, but sometimes meeting with Gabriella and I twice a month. And we really put a lot of effort into that. The initial work was research-based, looking at case studies from the area and really, you know, having the community members scrutinize what we had in the past and where we were going.
Yeah. So just to add to that, again, yeah, big kudos to Gary, Max, Anissa and Shayna. As you mentioned, I'll tap of meeting with their subcommittees. This is again volunteer work that they're doing, not only within their current committees, but also that's work from their families. That's connection to responsibilities there. And so this, this is additional meeting time. They're very passionate about this work and yeah, just wanted to add that in there. And then last but not least, there was of course some leadership overview. We wanted to give kudos as well to our city recorder, our climate and natural resource manager, our library director and public works director.
And one thing I do want to mention is, you know, Gary Klein is, or at least his family is directly impacted from some of the work on these policies. Gary and his brothers donated what is now known as Bill Klein Point inside of Milwaukee Bay Point to the city. That agreement with the city is one that the policies suggest that we honor. These two policies are about looking forward. We're not looking to rewrite previous agreements unless we go through a public process for renaming, which we will get into further. But, but this policy really impacted Gary and it was important for us to, to work with people who had literally stakes in, in the game here, to make sure that we can work to get this right.
Thanks, Adam. I know we mentioned that as well in our staff report too. Okay, let's see this timeline. All right. In terms of our working timeline, we, again, we met earlier this year up in February, met once a month, sometimes twice a month. We had very thoughtful conversations that included just the risks of naming after individuals themselves. And we also recognize how naming practices have historically been exclusionary by disproportionately honoring wealthy individuals and particularly white men. And this led to establishing more intentional naming criteria when it comes to naming after individuals. And we'll touch on that as well as in a later slide. But with research, we compared city policies. Some of those included the city of Portland, La Causa Ugo, NCPRD. And we mainly polled from NCPRDs and Portland's policy. And they later helped us develop as well the purpose, the scope and definitions in that first term. Then in our second term, we drafted procedures, donations and special considerations. And a part of this why this extended over six months was there's included conversations about naming after individuals who are still living or who have passed as well and deceased. And the subcommittee, as well as the full ESC and full CARB committee members ultimately decided to only name facilities and city assets after deceased individuals. And this was a big conversation that eventually we talked to our full committees to confirm. And from August up until now, we developed a separate memorial and donation policy to honor both living and deceased individuals. And then shared our working draft with leadership to review, which we incorporated their edits. And this led to the policy that WEHOP drafted today and were reviewed.
So Gabriella touched on much of this, but one thing that was very clear through all of our work with the subcommittee meetings and when we heard back from the full Equity Steering Committee and the Parks and Rec Board is that we wanted to avoid situations where it appeared that the city was selling the naming rights. We didn't want to get into situations where we were accepting donations for individual amenities inside parks and facilities. We're not going to name the drinking fountain. We're not going to name the playground. And we're not going to sell the names of our buildings or our parks or our open spaces. Now, finding a way to recognize that we don't have enough parkland. We don't have enough money to develop those parks, right? We are always looking for communities to work with us and get involved. And so we had to try to find a balance, right? And what is that balance that we're looking for? And we looked towards these, those other regional policies as Gabriella mentioned. So that's the city of Portland, that's NCPRD. That's Walton Hills, Parks and Rec District, THPRDs are known, Lake Osweago, Oregon City. I think there are six or seven different policies that, that we looked at and ultimately pulled mostly from, from Portland and NCPRD.
Great. Okay. Now we're going to dive into the policy process itself and bear with me. I know policy talk is everybody's favorite. So one of the first steps when it comes to naming policy and kicking those off, and it could be internal or externally driven. All submissions will go to the OCR, email a cow or a connection and determine to move forward by the mayor or mayor designate me. Once decided to move forward, public notification will be sent out through the city's communication channels to be solicited for public submissions for naming or renaming a city asset. Then a minimum of forty-five days will be provided for the public submission process through, this could be printed forms. This could be emailed to the city recorder's office. This could be online and Engage Milwaukee. We want to create multiple avenues for submissions to be able to be submitted. And then following that and the closing deadline, city staff will collect all the submissions, prepare them for the naming subcommittee to review. And just to clarify once over, the subcommittee members are appointed in, in the policy by mayor and or a designate me. And a staff liaison will be appointed by the city manager to help facilitate that process. After that, the naming, the naming committee will review and reconvene within two months following the submission deadline to review naming proposals, along with conducting any additional research for the naming submissions or one that the group is leaning towards pretty majority-wise.
So can I just ask a clarifying question? Is this process, say renaming public requests, so the city says, okay, we, you know, we think we should think about names for Val Flor and Owen Bray because, you know, why just name them after the streets? And we put out a call, but also conversely, somebody out there doesn't, feels like somebody else needs to be honored instead of some other person in Wichita or whatever. Is this process the same for both, whether it's initiated by the city or initiated by someone just submitting a request? Or are we not taking requests, one-off requests like that?
We will take requests, you know, so the renaming process is meant to be community-driven unless it's initiated by the city. So the differences in this policy would be that a community member would email OCR. We would review that and the justifications that they are providing for the renaming. And then it would be up to, under this policy, the mayor, the designate, whether or not we are going to move forward. If we decide to move forward, just like with the rest of the policy, we would then go through those initial steps. Ultimately, even though there is this, you know, subcommittee work, which would be then reviewed by staff, the final decisions on any naming or renaming would come to city council. So with naming, city council would be given the top recommendation from the subcommittee and then have an opportunity to either select that name, reject that name and tell the committee to get back to work or look at one of the other names on the list and choose those, or might even recommend that name to the committee. The differences with renaming is the first decision was, are we going to actually rename this? So someone submits a, a application or renaming Wichita Park, they make the justification, the mayor decides to move forward. We do our forty-five days, prepare our submissions, we have our staff review after the subcommittee works. Council, we can decide, yes or no, are we going to name, rename Wichita? Was there enough research and justification provided? And then do we decide on which name to select?
So I guess my only worry about that is if it's, can all come in off, one-off. We could be having a committee every year, you know, I guess, as opposed to sort of doing a call. Yeah, but I mean, maybe that's still, maybe that's all right. I just.
I think it's a really good point, Mayor. I think that the, the, this, the power of the mayor or the mayor designate is to kind of throttle that. To maybe say like, hey, we've got this request. I don't actually think right now is the right time, so we're going to hold it. Or we're going to wait till, you know, it's been a year, we've got another one in, in the hopper.
Yeah.
So I think, I think that was sort of the intent.
Okay, correct. Okay. Yeah. So they're very similar in processes. I think only just additional comment was that some reasonable efforts will be made to contact or connect with the party impacted. So who the name was previous for or connection there. So there's a research piece that's also needed. Okay, great. Thank you.
And you know, I would say that, you know, these questions and these comments, this is exactly why we're here. You know, we were six people working together and while we tried to consider all of the facets of it, we wanted to bring it back to all of you, the experts and to the public to, to get some feedback of moving forward.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. So after the subcommittee receives some of those submissions and research, we'll kind of narrow down and majority of the members will come to agreement for a naming recommendation that will then follow to staff for review. In the staff review of the leadership include city manager, city attorney, the city recorder. And that is also to mirror a little bit similar processes to a staff report. And that then after that is research and additionally move forward, then that will go to the city council. And the, for the city council kind of update, the staff liaison and a naming committee representative will be part of that conversation and updating proposal. And then once that's been presented, the decision of how the council wants to move forward has been made. We will have reasonable communication for the name out to the community and community members to be shared. So we'll adjust the language. I think there was a comment about after that, a decision made about appeals. I think we're going to do the, instead, request for reconsideration can be submitted. So there's still an avenue there for communication.
And I also note that there were some questions about what form this name takes. And so yes, we think that a resolution would probably be in order adopting the name once it's selected. In terms of updating maps and things like that, all of our regional mapping data is housed by Metro. So you can go on there and they have a public land shaped file that covers all of Metro. That is periodically updated. And so we would include new names in that existing update that happens. And if we filter on through submission, you know, if we want to update Google or Apple Maps a little bit quicker, they do accept crowdsourced data and, and also data and information from municipalities. And it's something that we actually do quite often as the city. So we can make sure that we're communicating with everybody the proper name and getting that name out there in the appropriate matters.
I will note, I mean, in this day and age of, you know, online maps and people not having the old, what are those called? Thomas guides and things. Hopefully, yeah, things get updated more quickly. But I will say that it's not been that long ago that I haven't had somebody ask me for Peter Kerr Park, which is what Spring Park apparently was named at one point, or El Fakao, one or the other. And I'm like, you know, so I do think sometimes those old names live on way past when the community is calling it something else. So I'm interested to learn that Metro is the keeper of that. So I will keep that in mind.
We'll definitely also add that follow-up language, I think, into this too, as needed.
Sure.
All right. I think on the last note for this slide, we just wanted to clarify that the policy limits naming to full properties or buildings except for internal public-facing rooms and buildings in which the city manager or city designate can oversee. Okay. And to dive a little bit more into the naming process itself, the categories, kind of decide if we're going to name after individual. Here's a little bit of the standard and criteria. Support of that is geographical, geographic or special features. This is place name base. This could be street subdivision, area. Adam already gave examples of a few parks names and how those were established. But still not knowing the origins. There is historic opportunity, right? It's a connection to references in the past to educate the community about historical context or connections to the land or, or facility. There is indigenous or cultural connections. When we added language in there, can be applicable with consideration for tribal governments or cultural communities involved. There's also native flora or fauna, and this includes a connection to nature for native plants or animal life. And then the last other category is for naming for outstanding individuals. And this is for naming after an outstanding deceased individual where person's significance has been accepted in the city, state's, county or nation's history. And it meets one or more of the following. And it meets one or more of the following. This includes the person was exceptionally dedicated or demonstrated excellence in service ways that made a significant impact to the land, community, city of Milwaukee, county, state, or nation. The person volunteered and gave extraordinary help or care to individuals, families, or groups or support of the community. The person risked their life to save or protect others and/or the person demonstrated commitment, commitment to equity, inclusion, and justice. These are some of those categories and standards. But we do want to note that in creating thoughtful conversations around the naming criteria and categories, we wanted to distinguish that a donation does not necessarily equate an outstanding individual. Those are separate items. And so in the policy we have written, when it comes to significant donations or donators being interested in naming, they can be considered when a threshold of one of the more of the following is met. And, and I think we have that, yeah, the bottom bullet point of that slide, and that is land for fifty-one percent of the Parker facility was deeded to the city by the donor. A contribution of a minimum of sixty percent of the capital construction costs associated with the development of the Parker facility. Or a provision of a minimum twenty-year endowment for the continued maintenance operation and or programming of the Parker facility are given. And it's also important to know that if donors are seeking a naming asset or associated with a major donation or honoring of an individual, it must still follow the naming categories that apply to the naming asset. So their recommendation can be considered by the naming committee and will follow the rest of the procedures listed for the naming process. Where council has the ultimate decision making.
And just to add on to that, the, what we just described was seen in the majority of the different policies from the region that we recognized. We are not reinventing the wheel here. We are pulling what we felt are the most Milwaukee pieces from those different policies that we looked at. And editing to fit our community's values. And so this was one that, again, going back to avoiding the perception of selling naming rights, this is something that the subcommittee felt very strongly about including. You may also notice in some of those other policies that exist out there, there's a waiting period after someone deceased, after someone dies. Our committee didn't feel as though a waiting period was necessary. They felt as though those submissions could be made right away and that the procedures in this policy were, were long enough to, to wait.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I know I've reviewed this many times, but I always think in scenarios. So in the case of, let's, let's pick a fake name for a benefactor.
Jim.
I was gonna go with Phil Knight. We'll go with Jim. Jim gives sixty percent of the capital expenses for something. Jim then can request a name to the subcommittee that meets the criteria, but it can't be Jim Park because Jim's still alive. So it'd have to be some, you know, it could, it could be about a person, but have to fit these criteria and be someone deceased. Would we still, per your last slide, do a public call for other submissions as well? So you'd have Jim's idea and anything else at the public.
Yes, correct.
So if Jim wanted to recommend, hey, we're gonna name this after Jim Senior, right? We would make that announcement that, yes, we are moving forward with naming this new asset or renaming the asset. And we are proposing, opening up the committee to make suggestions, because it's not guaranteed that it would be Jim Senior Park.
Good question. Counselor Anderson?
One, I guess two kind of points I have with naming for outstanding individuals. We say city, state, or nation's history. But I'm curious why limit it, like why not allow for Nelson Mandela Way or something more international as well?
Yeah. This is not intentional to limit that, so we can definitely open that up.
Right. And I guess the other thing then is, to me, it feels like broad enough, the first definition of the bullet point, naming after an outstanding deceased individual is allowed or the person's significance has been accepted in this geographical unit's history. I think that in calling out four separate categories, that all to me are inclusive of the original category, I just don't see a reason to really call out these things. To me, it is almost like, it, it just seems overly prescriptive. The fact that someone who gave their life is not obviously someone who has shown that they're an outstanding deceased individual. It's kind of implicit in the act, and I don't think we need to call it out for any of those things. I think the definition is broad enough, and I worry that by enumerating some things, we're leaving out other things. And I think better to just leave the initial broad statement.
Yeah. The conversations over what to define and how to write those definitions was something that we spent a great deal of time on. And I think where the committee landed was, we would rather write a definition and present it to all of you than not have those things defined.
What do you, can you identify the section, what you're talking about?
Yeah, on page thirty-four of the regular session packet, there's bullet point naming for outstanding individuals. And those are summarized on the screen there with those first four bullets. I think the text would cover everything that's there if it just said, naming after an outstanding deceased individual is allowed or the person's significance has been accepted in the city, state, and or nation, or now we're gonna say world's history, period. And I think that by enumerating.
Yeah, we, thirty-four?
On mine, it says RS, oh, sorry, the page is thirty-four, but it's RS thirty-one. Thank you. Yep, thank you. I just feel like inevitably we're gonna leave a sub-bullet off. And as opposed to trying to find every sub-bullet, it seems to me better policy just to say the larger principle and not have to imply that for some reason, these are the only groups or that these groups even need to be mentioned. Because to me, it's implicit that these would be included.
So are you saying take off one through four and just leave the two, three, four?
I'm saying take off one through four and just leave the initial statement, naming for outstanding individuals, keep everything up to history and add in load for world or whatever.
Yeah.
Place holder for the world. I think it's broad enough that it covers everything, but saves us from we've forgotten the bullet point.
Oh, to avoid the wonder more of the following.
And to your point, it's also that it's, it's a bit repetitive in that, and it could be exclusionary unless you get out. Okay. Thanks for that.
And I think that's more semantic, but I don't think that changes anything about the naming policy. But I prefer you can make these statements to just do a broad statement as opposed to.
Just before we move on to any other comments, we, we will need to make sure of, like, we've got consensus on making any edits. Thank you, Council President, and I would appreciate.
Yeah, do you want us to discuss that now?
I think probably it's cleanest if every idea raised, we kind of go through and see, is it ready there? So that we can check that off and then move forward.
Okay. Other, well, Counselor Massey? Your, your goose, your goose, your goose is about something else. Okay. Anyone else who wants to talk about the suggestion of going with just, I will just say, I think, I mean, I, I get the point that creating a list does have a tendency to exclude things that aren't on the list. So I think that is a good point. I kind of like the the more, the description point in number one, better than the description up above. You know, dedicated, and, and or demonstrated excellence in service in ways that made a significant impact. I do think the number, the risk, risk of life. You know, I think about Bergen City, which had a police officer killed in the line of duty. And I think they named their police station after their new public safety building when they did that. So I mean, I think that's kind of what motivates some of the, some of those enumerated things. But if you take the point that, you know, that can be encompassed in one statement, other views on that?
Are you saying replace the naming of outstanding individuals with just what bullet point one says? Or include the, include the description and then use number one as?
Yeah, I would massage the language and make number one and the top into one, one thought. And I, I think, I like what number one says better than just stopping the word history above, personally.
Yeah, I'm gonna post that.
Views generally?
Generally, I enjoy editing in public. And even more so by committee.
Good thing you enjoy that.
Just completely fulfilled. I think this is a great deal of work. I really appreciate the time that went into it and the dedication of the committee members that put in their time. And I don't see any opposition to the friendly edits that have been proposed.
All right. Okay.
Yeah, I just have a question on, on the same, or not on the same bullet point, but at the bottom, because the bottom of RS thirty-one, it says, city manager may approve temporary or minor naming decisions, which is fine. We love our city manager, but what would be the example of a temporary or minor naming decision?
Light went off. So we, we've had, you know, the Balfour property or the property on Balfour Street, or it became known as Balfour Park, that would be considered a temporary name. And we got a new net land something until we come up with the, the, the new name following this process. Minor ones would be like internal buildings or internal rooms, right? We have meeting rooms and conference rooms that only city staff reserve, right? And so the city manager can, can, we, we hope can handle facilitating those sorts of naming.
I don't know.
This is tough. She does have like a new mascot every time we meet, so.
And then took some of them down. It's a whole thing.
And took those nameplates down because we lacked this policy at the time.
Yes, yes. Yeah. Um, so, so I just, okay, I want to, I'm sorry to be pedantic, but I think I'm hearing no opposition to the friendly edits that would consolidate the definition of an outstanding individual so that it's kind of a match or a mix of what's existing there in the top sentence and bullet one. But get rid of the four sub-bullets.
And the only actual substantive thing was add international there.
And add international.
You got it.
Going once, going twice. Okay. Would you like to put your goose back up, Counselor Massey?
Okay. Comfortable moving forward?
This is not policy-related. This is not really policy-related, and you folks have done a good job, you know, putting this framework together. I gotta tell you, I, the naming review committee looks clunky to me. What I mean by clunky, it's kind of like, we're gonna form this ad hoc group and it's gonna come from this, this, these people and that people and that kind of thing, and they're gonna tackle this. And, and it just, it seemed like this is just gonna take a long time. So why wouldn't we just say, you know, one person from ESC, from Equity Steering, one person from Parks, and, and one person from some other, they're the naming committee for this year? Because that's cleaner, I think it speeds things up. And you know, like, if you have to have a, a, a naming review committee for each name that comes up, and you establish this committee and they got, what was it, forty-five days or to convene or something like that? Then another name comes up. Is that the same group? Is it another group? I just, I just think it's cumbersome.
So just to make sure I'm, I understand what you're saying, Counselor, it's the appointment of a sub, a naming subcommittee every time, could we just kind of clean up that process? So it's a rep of ESC or a rep of Barb?
Yeah, I have a point. If you want to make it three, so it's a odd group, I'm okay with that. You know, it's, I, I just see that we're gonna spend a lot of time saying, we're gonna end up with a, as this thing goes on, we're gonna end up with a naming review committee for, you know, for one place, and it's gonna have nine people on it because we just can't say no.
I guess the question for me is, do you want to try and work out all these edits at the dais, or do you want to like have these questions raised for staff to think about it, come back again? You're trying to avoid coming back again before adoption.
Um, I think, well, I think try, I mean, always, we would love to do this as expeditiously as possible, but bigger, I just think we need to know direction. So I, I, I can take, taking a bunch of feedback, but not knowing if it's the opinion of one versus a consensus is hard to know if we're making those edits. I will say, I love that we're chomping at the bit to discuss. And I think you guys have all read your packet, which is great. I assume you guys probably had a few more slides to kind of summarize the other policies. We could get through that and then go into edits.
Okay.
Um, if that kind of cleans, cleans things up.
Does this relate to that question? Okay, then go ahead. Let's let Counselor.
Finish this piece and then we'll get through the rest of the presentation and then take other edit.
Uh, I think that that sounds like a great idea. I think that would remove a lot of, maybe a friendly amendment would be, you have three committees, ESC, library, and parks. They each year after they form, after boards and commission appointments, self-nominate one representative for the subcommittee, and that subcommittee stands for a year.
Your library director, Donat, approval.
I think that's a great recommendation. This was definitely one that we were back and forth with, who should be involved, who is continuous. Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna let you finish your slides before we start popping up more issues.
Don't worry, we have questions for you too. Okay, I'll switch it over to Adam.
Okay, as I mentioned, we, we started this process focused mostly on how do we rename Bumembrae and Balfour Park? And as we worked through this, as we did our research, it quickly became apparent that even though we want is to, we want our names moving forward to be grounded in equity and involve the community, we also recognize that there are often minor asks that are made of the city, where families want to create a memorial. This is very commonly done through benches or trees or picnic tables. We wanted to make sure that we created a policy that allowed people to make those donations. It's important to note that when we're discussing this memorial and naming policy, that we would leave these up to the city manager or their designee to make the decisions on these donations and the plaque that would go with them. The donation itself is not being named, right? It's not gonna be Jim's bench or on the Jim bench. It's, it's going to be a bench in a park, right? With Jim Senior's name on that little plaque there, going back to our previous example. This policy is almost entirely taken from NCPRD. It is one that applies to our parks and our green spaces right now. You may not notice it, but a good example would be going to like the Sarah Hightate Rose Garden. There's about forty benches in that park, and I think thirty-eight of them have plaques on them right now. These are plaques that NCPRD staff tracks and follows. We wanted to open that up a little bit, getting to try and find that balance. We didn't want this just to be about memorials. We wanted to make sure that we could also recognize donations. And this comes from, whether it's the Library Foundation who wants to make a donation to Park Capital and Project, they're outside their door, whether that's a neighborhood association who's donating money, which was a significant amount of money from them, but only a drop in the bucket towards the playground and then the larger park project at Balfour Park, finding ways that we could recognize them as well. And we felt that these two policies kind of fit well together. So through an application process. So um through an application process, uh someone would request that the city accept the donation. In someone else's name or um the city could choose on itself to recognize the donation. Of either a financial contribution or non-financial contribution. We're looking for standard designs of these plaques. Um, and again, we're not naming the area or the amenity, we're just providing the plaque to go there. Um, the N C P R D policy recommends that these are time limited. Uh, they use twenty years. We copied that um and so we're only guaranteeing that that plaque is going to be there for twenty years. There may come from time to time the need to move a bench or move a tree for other work that's going on there. The city would do that. And try to make uh reasonable uh considerations to whoever that bench or tree is 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 named. Uh, or is remembering. Um, again, this is not necessarily a fundraising policy, though it doesn't preclude the city from creating a sub uh fundraising policy.
And so just so I understand the the. The sign, and I've seen the ones at Sarah Hyde, but I don't really remember. Do they say in memory of or are they just a name? And 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 I guess in reading the policy, I wasn't clear about what's uh. On the item versus on a separate sign that's near the item? Or is that just gonna vary based on the nature of what it the item is?
I think that would vary based on the nature of what the item is. If it's a bench, then we can easily put a plaque on it. If it's a picnic table, we can usually put a plaque on it. Uh, we don't necessarily want to put a plaque on a tree. Um, so you know, a rock next to the tree might be good. Uh, a plaque on a rock or a plaque. Um, near a playground, again, going back to that example of, you know, an N D A donating to a a park construction project. Um, so it would be kind of handled on a case by case basis. This policy leaves a lot of of. Um, decision making to the city manager or staff to do uh that. In terms of what the plaque says. Um, in the application, the submitter would write what they would like it to say, and then they would work with city staff to make sure that it's appropriate. Um, we do have some guidelines as to what we felt was inappropriate. And again, that comes from the case studies that we've we've done. Um, looking into this.
Okay, Council President?
Just from my understanding, contribution that's non-monetary, if someone volunteers their time. You're Metro Choice, we did a park here, thank goodness. The person who volunteered their time to get that grain together, think through that idea. They could be celebrated with a plaque or something like that. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, the the subcommittee had no problem recognizing people for their contributions. They just felt as though. Um, you know, a plaque in the space, um and the. Public good that they're doing should be enough, not naming the entire park or naming the playground or the picnic table.
And sorry that I don't remember this, but we we keep saying plaques. Could this also apply to like bricks? You know how often if so if you're fundraising for like an amphitheater? And everyone who donates a brick, you know, the name is on the brick. Or is it very specific to plaque?
Uh, well, we wrote this to be very specific. Um, I think if we want to open that up, we can. Um, what you will see in this policy and uh its partner policy is is a a long line of things that these policies don't apply to. Right? And that was our work to try and narrow the focus on our work. So, you know, we said like. This will not apply to public art or murals or wayfinding signage, right? This is not a policy for how to site a bench or a tree. This is a policy of what to do when someone says, my grandmother died, she really liked that park. I'd really like to donate a pension in their name. Near the pond that they like to go to, and this allows us to do that. Um, and and that's the purpose of that. Um, you know, grief counselors and therapists recommend. Um, people do these sorts of things. You know, when my mom passed away, someone said, hey, you know. You should really look into doing, you know, a public improvement and it's uh something that is pretty common. And, you know, our subcommittee felt like this is is more than appropriate uh for us um for us to do. But if we should, you know, write either a fundraising policy or adapt this policy to allow for. You know, names on bricks as parts of fundraising campaigns, we can do that. Yeah, so these are our examples, the memorial example and the donation example. I think I went through these. Um, you know, this policy is meant to be flexible. Um, it is not limited to the donation of a cost of a bench or the donation of a bench. Um, N C P R D uh accepts donations for a a lot of different things. Um, and so we wanted to, again, keep our policy flexible and matching those, but um. Since I've already talked about these uh examples, I don't uh think that there's any need for me to go through them. And so where do we go from here? Uh, well, we're gonna take your friendly edits and your feedback and we're gonna bring it back to. Uh, our subcommittee. We're gonna meet with them and discuss it. We're gonna massage that language. Um, and we're gonna start to think about some of the examples that were brought up here. Um, we hope to in December bring those these policies back to you to be approved by resolution. And then um tentatively, perhaps starting in January, we can work to uh create that. Uh, whether that's a subcommittee or that small task group, um however, wherever we land, we'd like to start that process. Um, sooner rather than later. Uh, these parks have been open. Uh, quite some time and there's been a desire to rename them going back to um at least a planning process, if not before. And so, uh, we would like to get that that process started, um once the policies are done, of course.
Okay. Before I do uh have lay out a little bit of the questions we had, did anybody have any comments or other general feedback or response to the memorial policy? Well, I guess. Do you want us to answer these questions first or do you want to go back to the language, the other language issues, people?
I'd recommend we do the language stuff.
Okay.
And then, because these are kind of next step stuff, so let's do language stuff and then we'll talk engagement and streets.
Other things people had by way of language suggestions? Oh. Oh, we were done before. Okay, um. I sent you some questions, um, but they're mostly um. Like, do we have master plans for all parks? They say that in there. We have to have a master plan and I'm sort of like. I'm not sure we have master plans for all our parks. Um.
So, yes, I think what the policy is trying to do is say, if we have a master plan, we're trying to follow that master plan. So, for example, when. Uh, the historic Milwaukee N D A came to us and said, hey, we'd really like to make a contribution to Scott Park. Uh, how about we pay for a bench? We said, yep, the plan has six benches in it. We have two existing plaques in Scott Park that we are going to eventually transfer over to those benches. Here are the ones that are available, but just so you know. Um, you can give us a donation if you want to, but we're not guaranteeing you're gonna get a plaque until we have a policy. Um, in the case that we were talking about a park that doesn't have a plan, we would leave that up to a staff uh discretion. Um, that would also fall into things that like make the un. An uncommon donation, uh the covered wagon. That's in Milwaukee Bay Park that's visible from ninety nine is actually a a donation uh that was given to N C P R D. Um, so this policy leaves a lot of discretion towards staff, particularly if there isn't a plan. Um, that would also probably be the case for like memorial trees, you know, uh a lot of our park plans. Um, don't get very specific to individual tree levels. Um, and so it would be up to staff to help pick the right tree and making sure that it gets in the right spot.
Um, another question I had was, um. I, well, another point I had was I just want to make sure it's not that we're using this not just for parks. I mean, there are places we might want to put benches that are not officially parks, whether that's along the future Monroe Greenway. Uh, you know, um, so I just want to make sure it's sort of it's public lands or it's not limited.
Yeah, so I think in the definition sections of the policy, we call out parks and green spaces or natural areas. Um, or facilities and that's that's uh city owned assets. Now, a lot of our trails aren't in the right of way. And so I think where we need to maybe clarify in this policy is that. If you're proposing something that would be in the right of way, we need to follow those right of way standards first. And we need an approved right of way permit before we can move forward on these things. Um, but the intention was that. Yes, this would be fairly general. Um, again, the the focus started kind of on parks and then we quickly realized, oh, we need to. Need to grow this to expand.
Um, there's a piece in there about honorary street naming and I wanted to sort of understand a little bit more about that. Where that came from.
It's one of your questions. Do you want to touch on that?
Sure, yeah. I feel like we can both kind of add it on this because I think there was also a a curiosity from the committee around the process itself for renaming and naming streets. And with all the county and bureaucratic level pieces of this and doing some research, I'm like, maybe this is not something we include in this policy. But looked actually for an avenue of honorary street naming where it doesn't change or impact the street, but provides a historical context. Or connection to the street. Um, and I that was an opportunity of. That was something the committee might be interested or wanting to propose to you all if you would like that to be captured in this.
Just to understand what you're saying, not actually renaming the street, just having an honorary. Could that be covered in the plaque and memorial um policy?
It could either be in the plaque and memorial policy or it could be in the naming policy, whichever one we feel is is most fitting. But yes, to answer your question, due to the logistics, the public safety. Right? Whether or not somebody gets their Amazon package, just general confusion, right? Um, we decided, no, we're we're not going to get into renaming the streets. However. Many, many cities have the opportunity or take the opportunity to do honorary street naming on their important streets. Honorary main, right? Main Street will be main remain Main Street, but maybe it's honorary. Till night.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, Portland actually has renamed, right? With Safer Chavez and um what's what is it? Um. Yeah, Harvey Milk. Um, M L K, a lot of cities have done that. Um. Those are actually renamed, right? That's not what we're talking about here.
And I believe engineering has a separate policy around street naming and renaming. Is that correct?
When I I as far as when I did the research, not necessarily engineering, there is some with uh overlap with. Um, county commissioner or county um planning also and consultants often do that. Do that diligent work when when we're doing some repairs.
So I don't want to, I don't want to add that to this process. But I also don't, I want to, as the council president likes to say, lay down a marker. Um, that I think we should look separately separately at our street naming. Cause I think once the dam is gone, we don't need a lake road. I mean, that's not really a functioning lake anyway. Why is it called Lake Road? Um, so um I think there are, and and as I raised at a prior city council meeting, we have a street named after a murderer. Most likely a murderer. So, um, you know, I do think I do dropped. So, we've all we've all. Oh, so, um, I totally agree. It shouldn't be part of this, but I do want to lay down a marker on that. And uh, uh, Councilor Massey?
I'm a proponent of little confusion. And whether we want to have honorary names, uh, uh, you know, Main Street with a with a colon sign and. Will Anderson behind it. I I think that's just confusing. I, you know, I just think it's confusing. It's it's. It's just kind of irritating people, you know, because they gotta change everything on their address, their I R S, their voter. Registration. I just think it's. It's, I just think it's terrible, you know, idea to go around renaming things or having subscript names and everything like that. I just, I like simplicity. I live on Twenty Eighth Avenue. Okay, it doesn't sound real cool, but.
You don't want us to rename that?
No.
Well, I mean, we can have that discussion. At a future date, but um.
Table streets for now.
Table streets for now. So does that mean table this also, this honorary streets? For now?
Is the right honorary? You're not changing street sign and addresses with that?
You're not. I guess what we're talking about is like those pole toppers on.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, most cities, they'll they'll put honorary history, but the existing street sign and name will still. Uh, exist, won't have to change your address with the postal service or your social security, whatever else. Uh, it would just be an honorary name to go in addition to that.
Yeah. So if there was a street, right, named after a murderer, hopefully nothing fell. Um, you could honor the family or some kind of context above it with an honorary street name.
That you have to be like just opposed with your murderer for the rest of time.
Okay. If I'm not seeing any other questions or. Thank you. If I'm not seeing any other questions or uh topics, language topics that counselors want to raise, then we'll turn to. Staff's questions for us.
I think one question um is, and this was brought up by some staff who reviewed it, is, you know, we've. Worked as a subcommittee trying to, you know, in involve the the relevant people that were appointed by council. Um, you know, members of the Parks and Research Board and Equity Steering Committee. Um, but are there are there other groups that we should be reaching out to? Are there other perspectives that we should be getting on? For this, um, you know, there was some concern that maybe removing. Um, or putting in those requirements for naming a space after a person. And having to follow that public process might limit uh fundraising, you know, and so I, you know. Is it the desire of council that we run this by? Uh, our foundations that we typically work with or or fundraisers out there? Um, or do we think we have enough friendly edits to take back to the subcommittee as it is?
And I might just jump on that. I think there's, it's a great question. I would be really interested in in specific groups, but I think there's also. We could do that kind of targeted outreach. We could also put these drafts up on Engage Milwaukee, ask for feedback and then. Ask you to, you know, share this with groups you think might be particularly interested.
Um, yeah, I I I'm not opposed to that. But I I also do think that sharing it with the foundations is a big thing because I I remember having a conversation with the Milwaukee Parks Foundation about this and it's just kind of a barrier to never fundraising. Um, so I wouldn't want to continue. Like, it would suck to do all this and then there'd still be a barrier for them. Um, so I I would be more inclined to hear more on their side too as well, because I mean, we kind of already said our piece. But I'm interested in what they say before making a decision. And even a potential survey if council members are open to that as well.
Well, I don't know if it's an actual survey, but posting it to Engage Milwaukee and, you know, having some way to make comments, I don't think we'll get very many. Just judging from what we typically see, although the the thing about what to do for winter holidays got a fair number of of suggestions in the end. Um, but I like that as opposed to putting the burden on staff. I mean, we share the burden to just direct Parks Foundation Board and, you know, the Library Foundation Board and. Um, here you go. Have a look, please. Have a look and tell us what you think. Um, rather than creating a lot of, and the N D As, I mean, it can go in Jason's Friday email and that way N D As get notice of it. Um, and, you know, it doesn't have to be a lot of staff attending a lot of meetings and stuff. So I I like that idea.
I was gonna suggest Jason's Friday email too, because it's not just the N D As, but individuals can sign up. To get those updates and sometimes it's folks that don't use Engage. Um, so, yeah, I think that might be helpful. And I guess that makes me think, you know. I don't know what other listservs exist, you know, with different constituencies across the city, but maybe it's. Worth sending out um in a staff email and just requesting that folks forward that through their networks within the community to.
within the community to, um, try and make sure that we touch as many different inboxes or, you know, like copies or something at local businesses. Yeah, we could definitely do something like that, put it in the pilot.
Just the co-pilot, which is coming soon.
That's right, the co-pilot. Just to clarify, this is of course before we confirm and approve the policy going forward. This is engagement outreach before. Okay. So I might recommend, kind of given what I, given what I've heard, you make the friendly edits that were suggested tonight, which are making outstanding individuals have no subbullets, incorporating subbullet number one and including international people, changing the, um, committee element, the subcommittee, naming subcommittee to like a, a standing committee, an annual appointed committee representing CARB or APAR member, ESC member and Library Board member. Um, and I think those were the three. Uh, and then put, to work on that with your, with your subcommittee, get it up, get it ready to put up on Engage, do the outreach, get the feedback, bring it back here for final review and approval.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Sounds like a plan.
I just really wanna thank Gabriella and Adam. I mean, this, since I started at the city, I remember this was kind of a, was an interest of council, an interest of some members of our committees. At, at that point, it was, we're gonna have to get a big consultant and do this big effort. And they have just gone above and beyond and I think done this frankly quite quickly, but in a very thoughtful and thorough way. And I feel so, um, so good about the process you've led and nice work you do.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I mean, yeah, I totally second that and I would do wanna say, like, some questions I had, you brought up, that they had discussed, like the thing about whether you should, I know some of the policies that I've looked at from other places have the deceased person, you have to wait till three years after they are deceased or whatever. And so it was great to know they discussed that and they said, no, we don't need to do that, so.
People have no idea how long it was discussing living or deceased. We really, really moved the needle back and forth and by the end of it, I was just like, I've actually just changed my mind completely. Whatever they want, so.
Could you consult the handbook for the recently deceased?
Or we can, uh, we can make sure they get our email about Engage Milwaukee.
That's all over our slides.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all for having us and we'll be back soon.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So next we have a discussion of our solid waste franchises presented by Finance Director Michael Osborne.
Um, we are here to talk about and continue solid waste discussion on the franchise agreement. Um, we last discussed this in February on solid waste and the status of the current franchise agreement. The current agreement is a rolling ten-year agreement that renews the beginning of each year. We are bringing the discussion forward again now and I have Chris Bell with me, who is a independent expert of solid waste, kind of through the region, to answer any questions you have. Tonight, the question that I am looking for, we are looking for an answer to is, are you prepared to hold a hearing on November 18th to consider terminating the current rolling ten-year fran- franchise agreement? We're not here to discuss new model at this time, just to decide if on November 18th, uh, we want to send notice to that the rolling, uh, agreement will cease and that thus starting a ten-year clock on termination. Um, with that, we're prepared to answer most of your questions. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, um, both, two of the solid waste haulers are here and, um, had submitted comments to you, council.
They have, they've submitted written comments and they have commented, they have requests to comment here. Um, I guess we'll first take questions from Mr. Bell or answers to, I, I will say, that's gonna start us off, um, I went back and watched the February, um, hearing and I thought we were pretty clear and pretty unanimous that we do wanna terminate. Um, uh, but I, I guess I, I would open it up for any questions to Mr. Bell about, um, any downside you see to that. I mean, to me, it seems like this ten-year rolling franchise was written by the haulers. It is a quintessential example of the, the fox's guarding the hen's house. Um, but, uh, uh, I know, like, anyway, yeah. Do you see a downside to us terminating and, and a future council in five or six years figuring out what to do next?
No, I don't see a downside. I, you know, there, there's some things that, that could, I, I think that could be advantageous to the city, looking, looking ahead. Um, one of the issues I brought up, uh, and I've been open with the haulers, the, the franchise system within the region, you know, has been, it, it, there used to be hundreds of haulers, small separate franchise, they were small independent contractors, family. And, you know, over the last twenty years, there's been a consolidation within industry. And if you look at the franchise map, there, there are territories all over the place. And so one of the, one of the issues that I've looked at is why don't we consolidate, you know, some of these franchise areas that have one hauler or two haulers, depending on the size and depending on the input from city council, to maximize the productivity of the collection rounds? Because you may have, you know, I'll take City Correction, for example, you've got, haulers got two franchises on both sides of towns. You know, why you have, um, one territory, one continuous territory instead of having to drive back and forth. Milwaukee's similar. Um, you've got, uh, three franchise haul, franchise haulers. One of them's got a really tiny, small area. Um, but if you wanna look and consolidate and have one hauler, one responsive hauler, um, that's a choice that the city could make. If you wanna continue to have the same territories, that's another decision. You can expand programs. There's a lot of flexibility that you have when you do this. Uh, and you open it up to other, if, if you were to do a procurement later on, you open it up to all the other potential haulers who'd wanna provide services. So I, I don't see a downside, um, by doing this, you know? And, and the incumbent haulers has just as much or they, you typically have a little bit more of an advantage when they're, uh, proposing on, on a franchised area, uh, that they already control or they already provide service. Um, and sometimes there's a bid risk, right, where you put it out and maybe the rates go a little higher, um, because they're building in some additional risk that they may lose or, you know, because they're not gonna, you know, I'm not, they may bid it to, to win it, I mean, really low, but chances are pretty likely, unlikely, that's not gonna happen. But then again, it's ten years down the road and I was talking with, with Dave yesterday. I said, ten years, I said, chances are that none of us are gonna be in these current capacities in ten years. So, you know, that's not gonna be a decision that I think any of us have to worry about, but it does give future councils the ability to make those decisions.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I have noticed, I mean, I had the same feeling, like, I just don't like the idea of hamstringing a council, you know, indefinitely. And I think when listening to the tape and everybody sort of agreed with that. Um, I did wanna ask, like, some cities bigger than us, like Oregon City and, like Oswego, have a single hauler. Um, so they put it out to bid that way? Is that?
Well, that, Lake Oswego, eh, the, the, the family that had that was Rossman. And then they got bought out by a Allied Waste and Allied Waste merged with Republic Services. So it's always been kind of a family territory for, for, for quite a long time until it sold out to bigger companies.
Okay. So it wasn't an actual decision by council to go?
No, I, yeah, I would have to, I would, I don't know the exact history of that. Uh, Rick Winterhalter, the county, would know that, he would have the answers.
Yeah.
On that.
Okay.
Um, but there are other, there are other history where you have one hauler. Trontown has one hauler.
Wilsonville, I believe, has one and they have one of, some of the lower rates too.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Uh, questions for Mr. Bell or Michael? If not, I will give the haulers their three minutes and then we'll come back and answer question Michael proposed to us, I guess. Yeah. Does that sound good? Okay. All right. Um, so I'm gonna, uh, invite the, uh, haulers up, Chris Wright from Hoodview. I'm gonna give you guys three minutes each.
All right, good evening, Mayor Beatty and members of the council and staff. Uh, my name's Chris Wright, I live in Camby, Oregon, and I represent Hoodview Disposal and Recycling, who, who provides solid waste and recycling collection services for the city of Milwaukee. Um, I've been with Waste Connections for twenty-eight years in various roles and locations. Uh, for the last four years, I've been a site manager and now district manager for some of our, our companies in the metro region, including Hoodview Disposal, serving Milwaukee, Clackamas and Sandy, Oregon. Tonight, I would like to express my strong support for the franchise system currently in place for solid waste, recycling and yard debris collection in the city of Milwaukee. Franchise system enables long-term infrastructure investment, allowing providers like us to maintain modern fleets, facilities that reduce environmental impact and improve service reliability. Uh, solid, solid waste industry standard or ten-year contracts for reason. Uh, it allows for a reasonable rate of return for the operator and keeps the cost down for the customer. Shortening the length of the franchises will only increase the cost to the customer, only work to increase the cost of the customer. Uh, we hear your concerns regarding rates and increased burden on your constituents. I encourage you to, to continue working with us as your current haulers to avoid the possibility of unintentionally increasing that burden. Several cities in Washington State have recently gone through the procurement process for new contracts and experienced an aggregate thirty-nine percent increase in rates from the previous agreements. Those cities all chose their incumbent haulers because they were able to offer the lowest rate. Now, this is largely due to having the infrastructure in place to provide this service. We also agree on service-related issues and I would encourage you to look at the franchise system to provide regular contract performance reviews so the franchisees are held accountable. I urge the council to continue supporting, to continue supporting and refining services within the franchise system. Some refinements could include a low-income assistance program modeled after Portland regression. Uh, Milwaukee also chose to add fruits, food scraps to the Cribside Yard Debris Collection Program, which increased the cost due to additional disposal fees. I feel the public and your, your constituents desire that option and we're more than willing to try to promote that service and increase the, the use of it. Um, we're also open, open to scrapping the program if the council desires, but that'd be very challenging since taking away a service is, is usually difficult. In closing, uh, franchises are proven systems that balance public service, sustainability and economic efficiency, and it's one that benefits our entire community. Again, I urge the council to support and refine this model. I would also like to extend an offer to all of you to do a ride along with one of our drivers to experience the challenges they face every day out there on the streets. Um, I appreciate your time tonight and I'll happy to ask you, answering questions.
Yeah, you mentioned that thirty-nine percent increase. Um, that was due to the, what, what, what happened there? What was it? They removed the ten-year system or what, what, what was the catalyst for that?
It was just, it was put out to bid, um, the incumbent haulers made the lowest bids, but it was still a tremendous increase in cost to, to the city and constituents of the city, um, just based on current market conditions. So it's, we keep our rates low, you guys monitor that and, and manage that, but, you know, uh, our rates are, our margins are very managed and within a specific operating range, so.
So how, how does the ten-year, like if it went from ten to five or something, for example, and I, you know, I'm not an expert in this, but how, how does that, what does that do to you guys? How, how does that create a, that large of an increase?
It just, it limits our ability to depreciate the, the, you know, the carts, containers and trucks that we're purchasing. A truck costs five hundred fifty thousand dollars today. Um, cart is fifty to fifty-five dollars each. So without being able to have that guaranteed revenue for ten years, um, it just really hampers and hinders the ability to, to make those capital investments.
Are you saying those Wash- Are you saying those Washington new contracts were a shorter term? They were a short term? They weren't a ten-year term?
I don't, I don't believe they were, but I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I can't answer that. You're probably.
Other questions?
Thank you again.
Good evening, Mayor Beatty and Milwaukee City Councilors. My name is Dave Huber. I'm the Senior Public Sector Manager for WM. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here to express support of the continuation of the current solid waste franchise agreement. WM provides waste collection services for the city of Milwaukee, servicing almost forty-five hundred residential customers, four hundred and fifty casual customers and over sixty industrial customers in the city. Earlier today, all of you should have received a letter from me explaining the benefits of our current franchise agreement, which include providing fair and equitable rates, safe and efficient service, and the benefits of regulatory oversight. It is important to note that the city oversees the rates and you review these annually to allow for any necessary adjustments. The franchise system also provides safe, efficient services where the haulers have designated areas, helping maintain a safer environment for the community that we work and live in. What does regulatory, regulatory oversight mean? To put it simply, it is the opportunity for us to have a strong partnership and relationship with you and the city staff. Uh, to, uh, to ensure that we are achieving the goals and priorities, priorities of the city. The city sets the standard and we collaborate with you to meet those standards. Some of the other benefits to the existing agreement include security to this, to the city. Having the current system in place allows franchisees to be immediately responsive to requests from the city, whether it's adopting innovative programs or enhancing our current services, such as bulky waste cleanups that we have here in Milwaukee. Also, the assets needed to provide these services, which include trucks, carts and containers, can be depreciated over the existing terms of the agreement, lowering the monthly impact cost to the customers. The current franchise agreement is not uncommon. WM has several ten-year agreements in place locally, including Clackamas County, Washington County, City of Beaverton and Yum-Hell County. And just about two hours ago, another Mayor Beatty in the city of Beaverton, in the city council in Beaverton approved a full ten-year franchise agreement, uh, for five collection, solid waste collection providers in the city of Beaverton, and we're one of them.
That's a ten-year fixed term, not a rolling term, correct?
That is correct. Yeah. And we can go, you know, if you have questions on what those differences are, but it is a ten-year term with a three-year renewal. Every three years, it goes back to a full ten-year, ten-year term. And I think about a time, but if I can finish, uh, for many decades, the haulers have demonstrated a strong commitment to providing excellent service to the residents of Milwaukee while also producing sustainable results, results and consistent operational safety. We look forward to partner, partnering with the city in the future and we appreciate the opportunity to serve Milwaukee and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Huber? Okay.
So, uh, if, uh, WM bought a, the, the new truck on January first and, uh, put it into service on January second, how long would you take to depreciate its value?
Uh, currently, I believe the, the way it's set up here in the city of Milwaukee is we depreciate that over, uh, seven years. Uh, currently, I believe the the way it's set up here in the city of Milwaukee is we depreciate that over uh seven years.
Seven?
Seven years.
Thank you.
I I just want more clarification on Beaverton. Uh, you mentioned it's it's a ten-year deal, but it's not a rolling ten, so can you explain how that that works a little bit with the three? I just that kind of went over.
Yeah, no, certainly, uh, counselor. So uh, the city of Beaverton, uh, the way it's set up is where it's every three years we go through a renewal process with the city, and we just went through that uh a few minutes ago. We we all went through that renewal phase uh where the city, you know, asked all the all the service providers, there's five of us, uh, which there's advantages to having multiple haulers too in the cities. But then uh we submit our our renewal paperwork, all the questions that the city has, and then if approved, uh, which it was this evening, then it brings that those terms up to um, the full ten-year terms. Yeah, and then and then we do this again uh in three years.
So if it had not improved tonight, you would still have seven more years?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Elsewhere, seven more? Does it look like you might have a question? No, okay. Uh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I got one more yellow card while we were sitting here, so Beth Vargas Duncan?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Beth Vargas Duncan. I'm the Regional Director of Work of Oregon Refuge and Recycling Association for the metro area here. And in that capacity, I represent um the haulers through the various areas, including the ones serving you in the city of Milwaukee. And uh, I'm from Salem, just so we, for the record. So I wanted to, I signed up last minute so that I could share a little bit more, and I think I'm in a unique position as a person in that I used to be a regulator and worked for the city of Salem and regulated all the franchises we had at the city of Salem as their franchise and revenue administrator. And so just a quick reminder that hasn't come up in a little while, but when I was at Salem, the franchise revenue was the second largest revenue into the city behind uh property taxes. And the city also created that position that I had because the city, even a city the size of Salem, can get distracted and busy. And when I took that position, some of the franchises had expired. So there can be very good reasons to have rolling franchises to keep the revenue flowing and to keep the security and public safety um of one of your utilities, solid waste utility or service. So I appreciate the comments I've heard and the concerns about, you know, finding a future council or um feeling like you haven't had as much uh control in the franchise and the language itself. And the franchise system is actually designed for the city council and the community to be very enabled and to highly regulate your haulers. And so we set rates and we work with you. You set the rates, you set the services, and you say jump, and we say how high? So that's generally the the way um we're accustomed to having it work. And um, I just wanted to also add, um, we've been we've had a busy evening, and the city of Gresham also just did their franchise renewal um, tonight, and it passed about an hour after Beaverton's did. And it's very similar where it has the longer term with uh the city of Portland calls it an opener, where they look and do a check-in and review and see how the haulers are doing, have a conversation, and um then make a decision as to renew or not. And that can also help with that feeling of you're you know, not wanting to find a future council. So um, I am happy to answer questions. I've worked in this business a long time, and I have eighteen years of government business, and I just switched to work for the haulers because I'm proud to do so.
Thank you. Um, on Gresham, as I seem to recall, theirs is only seven years?
You know, I work in so many jurisdictions, I don't want to be held to that, but I would be happy to come back with you know, looking at all the jurisdictions and finding out. I think that's correct, and then uh Portland, I, because it usually is we ask to have it renewed to the full term, so it's usually between seven and ten years. That's a modification of a rolling franchise.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Vargas Duncan? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bell, is there anything about going the way a future council might in seven or eight years decide to go that um should I, I mean, that runs the risk of the kind of thirty-nine percent increase that we just heard about? Oh, I hit you.
Uh, thirty-nine percent increase, I'm assuming is the city of Kirkland, Washington, was you know, may maybe alluding to, um, there was a lot of circumstances surrounding that, and the city came out with a list of additional plans and programs and things that they wanted the hauler to do that the city didn't want to do, and then the other piece too related to that increase was that the haulers took a significant risk and a significant hit during the downturn in recycling, uh, and the cities in King County didn't, they chose not to. They chose to let the haulers take the risk and the uh the the financial loss. So that comprised with all those other things where there was the reason for the significant increase, and that happened in a couple other jurisdictions within King County. So and it's it's rather unique, and King County has a different model where they do the contract and they they every ten years they put it out to bid, and so there's been three haulers that have been primarily bidding on those contracts over the last fifteen years. Here, it's it's interesting because if you stop the franchise, you know, the the renewal, that doesn't mean that later on you can't start it up again. Doesn't mean that you can't change it. Uh, it's just given you the elected body the ability to make decisions. And 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 it opens up your capacity to 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 not be injured. So you could say, I want a seven-year con franchise, and that's why I was asking person at Gresham, uh, what the franchise length is at Gresham, because I believe it's seven years, and it's it correlates with the depreciation of equipment. You know, you could go a couple years down the road and and look at going back to the rolling franchise. There's there's a lot of flexibility that you have. And that, you know, it's not to say that these same haulers wouldn't bid on, they, you know, they're in, like I said, they're in a good good position to retain the work that they're currently doing right now. But it does give the elected by the ability to make decisions based on, you know, the future intent of the council.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council President, you had your goose up first.
Chris, my problem is not with necessarily the ten-year period or even the fact that it is a rolling um franchise agreement. My biggest problem is that it's a one-year rolling um franchise agreement. That term seems far too short. There's no way to amend the franchise agreement without ending it. Um, or signaling that we're going to end it over the next ten years. So in order to amend it in any way, we have to take a step forward.
Councilor Bussler-Boddy?
Yeah, I guess my question, hopefully it's simple, but who stands to benefit more by not having a ten-year rolling, the taxpayers or the haulers?
I think there's equal risk. I think there's equal risk. But it but from 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 your point of view, it gives gives the city council uh, it expands your capacity to make decisions. Like, Councilor Anderson, it's it's one year, it is, but it's one year on, you know, in advance, in ten, you know. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, uh. So how do folks want to proceed?
We we should have made this clear in the staff report, my apologies, but we would have to have a hearing to to consider a termination or sending the letter to the haulers to terminate, so we've we can pencil that in and seeking your direction tonight on if you'd like to have a hearing, and it would be November eighteenth.
Thoughts on that? I think I made my thoughts clear.
I'd like to go with the hearing in November. I'd like to go with the hearing in November.
Proceed with the hearing.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I have, uh, none none of this is about the current haulers in my mind. It's not about uh service that we deem as, you know, some substandard or anything like that. It's just about a system that um hamstrings city councils for so many years. Yeah, so, thank you, thank you everyone.
And thank you, Michael, for giving up watching the end of the Yankees game. They won.
They won. Okay, that's the end of uh the things on our agenda except for council reports, and I know we have at least, we have two letters that we got uh late in the day today, um, and probably some other things that people want to bring up in council reports. So I'd like to take a break and come back at nine o'clock. Thank you. Um, so I'll just say if anyone has specific, specific challenges they think that this interpretation is faced that are worth raising to the reps on the, who are going to these meetings. Um, I guess to avoid violating the serial meetings law, send those to Emma. And, um, and I will collect anything anyone has. And it's needed by, uh, Thursday. So just, just over the next year or two, if you think of anything that you think would be illuminating for Mayor Rosner of Sherwood, who's our rep, um, on this work group, uh, or the work group itself. Yeah, send that to Emma. Okay, um, two letters. So who wants to go first?
So the, the letter that you're looking at is this draft letter for council consideration on Kellogg Restoration Project Leadership Team. So, um, uh, after the, you know, revelation that, um, project team was expecting the city to pay for the, uh, the sewer pump and relocate the sewer line. There were some concerns here because quite frankly, um, it was not on our radar. And so, uh, we had a meeting since this is now really an intersection of parks and green spaces and affordability. Adam and I, uh, along with some of the city staff got together to discuss this. And we feel like, um, we, we want the project team to come. But we're getting all of our information, you know, through the, the city staff representations to the project team. And we think that there needs to be a more formal communication between the leaders of the project teams, specifically outside of the city staff. You know, um, I keep calling them American Rivers, but I'm sure they're, I can't remember their current name. And, uh, and the Watershed Council, so.
And ODOT.
And ODOT, right. And we're asking them to come and talk to us. So if you, you, uh, I'll get to this in a minute. This is in the, in the, um, toward the end of the letter, uh, asking them to come forward in November 18th and address the number of questions we have. But we kind of rolled this into, you know, our rationale for asking for this information. And because we made a, a, you know, a connection between each one of the three city goals, uh, and what they want to do. Um, and, you know, we have this, um, we have this, um, I'll call it a synergistic potential between Kellogg and Milwaukee Bay Park. If in fact, um, you know, the, the path, the underground path is built. Uh, but, you know, as things are, you know, developing here, that, that, that path has been called into question about whether it's going to be built or not. And I think that's really important from our perspective, really important. And we don't think that that's something that can be negotiated away. On the economic development front, you know, we see both Kellogg and Milwaukee Bay Park having that synergistic effect. But then, uh, you know, where people go from a more passive recreation environment or active recreation environment, that would, bringing people into both of those environments also have the knock-on effect of bringing them into the downtown area and frequent the, you know, the restaurants, bars and shops and that kind of thing. And, you know, obviously the, you know, the affordability issue is that, you know, this, this thing is going to cost like four plus, uh, million. Uh, and I, I'm a little bit concerned that, that the team is sort of saying, well, you can, it's never, we're really not going to cost you anything. And we don't think that that's true. Um, uh, because, uh, you know, we're going to incur, you know, like, even if, uh, you, even if Phil Knight gave us four million bucks, we can talk about Phil Knight. You know, we would still have long-term operational costs that post the rest of the city. And, you know, this is a capital investment program. We just can't, we, we go through a very deliberative process on the budget and the CIP. And we can't really make this kind of on the fly here in October and November. It has to be, you know, rolled into the, our dedicated process of prioritization of the CIPs in the budget. And, you know, those, those are our goals. So we've asked them to come to the meeting on November 8th.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, sorry, uh, to answer the following questions. What's the overall project funding strategy and outlook at this point? Because, you know, one of the things, you know, the worst case scenario is that we, we sunk, you know, four million bucks in this thing. And then all of the, uh, funding for the broader project falls through. Then we've sunk four million dollars in it for no reason. Because we think that the, the existing infrastructure has 20 years life left. Okay? And, um, uh, you know, is the revised timeline warranted given the new federal, you know, realities and, you know? Uh, and basically has every option of the sewer line been fully explored to include the channel orientation or that, you know, to eliminate the need for sewer pipe relocation? Um, and, uh, is there still an option for the sewer relocation to be folded into the bigger project and funded by the, you know, the, the larger project? Which was, you know, which was the original statement, right? Uh, and so then we start to ask about, you know, some of the other money that's been set aside. We had one million dollars in the, oh, well, where exactly is that money going to be spent? Can that be put toward the, the, the pump station? Uh, and, uh, you know, how do, how do they envision using the $10 million metro grant? Each one of these team members kind of has a piece of this thing. And I'm concerned that they all think they're going to get, you know, a piece of the one million to 10 million. And, uh, they all can have it, you know? Um, and so, uh, uh, you know, ask for considerations with shared path as I've talked about before. Um, and, you know, I, I'm a little bit concerned that, uh, I think we have a very dedicated and, uh, smart team. But, you know, just, does, I don't, I don't know that the project actually has a charter or a decision-making process that's, uh, that we can put our finger on. Because these things are kind of happening in a sort of a fluid manner. So that's why we've asked them to come. But it's not, we don't want them to come and, and, and feel like we're trying to sabotage this thing. We're just trying to make sure that it's on solid footing. And everyone's roles and responsibilities and the allocation of resources are well defined as we move forward because we're all behind this. And we, I don't really want, quite frankly, when they were here before, uh, I, I think we, we kind of get a dog in a show. It's a, you know, history of the project. I know the history of the project. We all know the history of the project. We don't need to hear about the history of the project. We need to focus on the things that need to get done. And, uh, so, um, uh, I, I hope it's more of a discussion rather than a, a presentation. And, you know, despite the fact we have a letter here, you know, I'm going to talk to the, to the, you know, Neil and others about a real conversation about these kinds of things. If the council agrees with the, with the premise of this letter.
I think also, you know, it's worth maybe pointing out, and maybe it's a, I don't know. I, I mean, the last two times we met has been a work session. And so they haven't really been able, I mean, they did some commenting from the sidelines, but they haven't really been at the table. So I think.
But they have presented.
We should acknowledge.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
We should acknowledge that, that we want to put this on a, you know, a thing where they are at the table with us. It's not all unknown that we've scheduled work sessions and it's awkward to have their input, right? So, um, um, you're co-authoring this? Did you want to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I didn't, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Council President for, for putting this letter together. And I think you did a great job of putting everything that we talked about in the meeting. And I, I agree a hundred percent. Um, nobody's saying that we're against this thing. We're, we're trying to kill it. But, I mean, there's some serious questions and concerns that we have on all levels. So, um, again, I just wanted to appreciate the, the content of this letter because I think it's very clear and, and lets me know exactly what, what we're trying to do here.
Council President?
Um, yeah, I'll just, that is a great letter. I appreciate you all putting this forward. I think it will help our conversation on the 18th. Um, I had two small requirements on the fifth bullet went down. We have budgeted one million dollars from the URA funds. Um, I had a question of what question you're actually trying to get answered here. And you said when you're, um, talking to me, you want to address where we're supposed to use this. I might just add that there so their project team has that clarity of what we're asking there. Um, the other small thing was with each of the goals, we start with kind of an introduction about what the goal is and kind of some of the nature of the goals. I think we're kind of fine, like the, whether or not the city can influence the cost of living. To me feels immaterial to this. There were some small edits that I sent to Scott that could just rework those bullets to say the direct access to Kellogg Park, um, or to one day Kellogg Park. Um, but, uh, I think if we made those tweaks, it would just focus on those parts. I don't think that's essential. I think it's great.
Uh, do you have, so you have all of these things that you mentioned?
Uh, not the fifth one.
Fifth one?
Uh, that one that I described with URA. Yep.
So what would you recommend or change?
That one, I might just add a sentence at the end that says, um, we have clarity on where you think you should use this or something to that. I think you said the ball.
I would just, um, offer that, I don't think you want to give your budget authority over to non-city agencies. So I wouldn't call, I wouldn't phrase it as how, how, how would you like us to spend this? Or sort of, um, does the project team have an expectation as to where these city funds would be applied? Um, because you retain the ability to program them. That's not their choice.
You can get that, Scott?
Okay.
That was in the fifth bullet, um, fifth bullet, second page.
So a new last sentence. Uh, other comments, questions? Well, I'm, I had, I got a goose.
Just, uh, there's been some conversation with regard to economic development with downtown businesses and the downtown alliance around creating a gateway from, uh, downtown to Milwaukee Bay Park. Um, and so I realized that the intent here, at least as it's laid out in your letter, is to connect the park's natural area through the, the walking path or the footpath, shared, shared use path. But I think that with regard to economic development, there's a secondary, um, but there's a, there's a secondary project that the downtown businesses would be interested in some attention to, which is creating some type of a gateway. Um, and I don't think it's the shared, shared use path. I think it's in addition to that.
So that's from us?
Yeah.
But that's, is that really?
I guess what I'm, well, I guess I'm bringing it up because the goals are highlighted here. And the connection from the goal to this project is highlighted for the leadership team. Um, but I think that the downtown businesses, if I might attempt to speak on their behalf, would like to see some note to, um, you know, maybe it's, uh, I'm trying to find some, some creative words that I can add to this.
You might have already seen this, but in that, um, after that doc, I'm thinking of the section between this and a park and green space go.
Right.
Of acolyte, pedrake, graphic, pervasive shops, restaurants, too. I think that's not everything.
Um.
We can certainly add something else.
I mean, I guess. I guess I'm a little puzzled as to, I mean, I get the idea of another, of another gate, more direct gateway, more direct connection. And I mean, it's something we talked about with South Downtown, Overpass, different, you know, Paris and Main, Overpass. Um, so I don't know what exactly dam is, you know, might be wanting to propose. I'm all ears. I think it's great. But is, it's not something that would fall within the scope of the dam removal?
I think what I would suggest is the second sentence, um, would say that, um, it, is it, it's important for the city council to, um, support, um, ease of access and clarity of, or like, and, we're going to get so. Yeah, can you just make sure that's in the, in the? All the kids watching, you've already gone to bed, right? I'm sure that's what they're paying attention to in the world. Um, I understand what you're saying there. I, I think that it's just calling out that it's not only the, um, footpath, but that the, that the, um, the city is entertaining multiple points of, you know, defined access to Milwaukee Bay Park.
Devil's advocate, does that, does that put any risk then of them saying, oh, the underpass isn't that important? If you've got other ideas of how to do that connection?
Um, no, I don't think so. Because you've already made the point under parks and natural areas. If the intention in this letter is to make a connection to the project and each of the three goals, you have that connection, um, that you've made under parks and natural areas. You're doubling down on it through economic development. And, and I understand that, you know, it, maybe what we decided to do is just settle on the underlying. But I want to just be on the record, apparently for my expletive. And also, um, that there is interest in creating, um, defined gateways, plural, to Milwaukee Bay Park. And I'm fine if we leave it out of this letter. I just want to make sure that, that folks know that that conversation is happening in a community. And I'm fine if we leave it out of this letter. I just want to make sure that that folks know that that conversation is happening in the community.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to hear that that conversation is happening in the community, but I do have no worry. Emma has that they already want to not do. And 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 actually, just looking at this language, nothing here. And I realize it's not really the goal, but nothing here says anything about safe and safe crossing of ninety ninety. Um, which is, you know, the whole reason for the underpass, right? Is is to get people from away from having to cross that grade on ninety ninety, um.
Well, could you just say, in that second sentence, could you just say building an environment that is safe and easy to access? Would that give it your point, Mayor?
Is that, I mean, are we talking about it, um, the second sentence?
Yeah, um, actually, third sentence, sorry. The first element is, the second element. And then the second element includes building an environment that is safe and easy to access with both natural areas of commercial entertainment and shopping options. The second element includes building an environment that is safe and easy to access with both natural areas and commercial entertainment and shopping options. And I will, um, retract my previous comment about adding something else complicating to the sentence.
That was pretty simple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Natural areas and what?
All of that remains the same. The only word, the only two words is safe and.
Safe and before easy, easy.
That's it.
Okay. Cool. All right. Yeah, no, I'm glad to hear that. Emma's thinking in those terms, and I know the Arts Committee has their, they're thinking about where we can put to. Um, so, anything else? We, uh, is everyone good with signing on? This was drafted with the idea of all of us signing, yeah. Everyone's good with being signed on to this? Okay.
I will format it and put these edits in and share it with Councilor Massey.
One last question, Mayor. I heard your point that some of the previous work sessions have been staff at the tables. It's not been a very conducive for our conversation. Just to confirm, the time we are holding for this, if on November eighteenth, is the entire work session? But I think we were envisioning it more as a work session between them and you, with staff kind of on the side.
Yeah.
Um, is that okay? Or do you want it on the grid?
I mean, and we do have work sessions where we have the other, you know, like today, we had, you know, Dr. Blurry at the table. Um, we just haven't formulated the last ones that way with them at the table, so, yeah. Um, okay. All right. Counselor, Council President, you have a letter.
Um, okay, my letter, uh, the, um, the Valamet Week today, this morning, reported that, uh, Milwaukee resident Frank Miranda was, um, one of the first people in Oregon who was legally detained by ICE. Um, I read that article and I think I've already been pretty based my hopes up about what we're seeing in Portland, what we're seeing across the nation, the way that, um, this agency that I think has had challenges that I can detail in the letter for years on end is now being weaponized in an extreme way, um, to really impress violence upon our community. Um, and I, um, I was fine to write a letter with just two words in it and sign it off and send it out. Uh, but I wanted to enumerate a little bit more.
Did I already say one of those words to you?
You might have already said one of those. Uh, Adam definitely said one of those words. But, uh, I thought I might enumerate that a little bit more and put down in writing some of the frustrations that I think I'm not uniquely feeling. I think a lot of our residents are feeling as well right now. Um, so I wrote this letter as an attempt to put into writing, um, those sentiments. And I think really importantly to, um, this is something, a story that's been rolled out this morning, and I've already heard from a lot of folks about what's happening in Milwaukee community about this. Um, and I think it's important to show, like in your values-based response about this type of action, thanking our community and where the city stands. Um, so I'd love to put it forward to you all. If you all would like to sign on as well, I wrote it in a framing that it can be all of council. I'd love to, um, get you all to sign on and, um, would love to be able to make this statement together. It's a great letter. I I really enjoyed reading it, uh, and I will sign on twice.
Uh, I guess I'd like to know, I mean, why a letter to Kristi Noem, you know, that's not going to go anywhere versus a kind of, kind of statement that we did like earlier this year, uh, or some kind of just a general, yeah, just a general statement of, uh, hope so.
Yeah. In the article, it has a letter that Frank is using in a lawsuit against Kristi Noem that's directed to Kristi Noem. And I think I wrote this original letter, kind of throwing support behind the tort claim in Kiesmink. And I realize that's not really our place as a city. Um, but I think in some ways, writing to the secretary in kind of concert with Frank really supporting the statements that Frank is making and that's crazy and Frank is, um, going through. I think validates claims that he's making and throws our weight behind that. I think it's kind of, I'm fine with the semantic difference in who we address it to. Um, that was, I guess, my thought when I addressed it to her as opposed to the director of ICE facility in Portland or a generic statement. You know, we can send it to more than one person, too. I have no problems sending it to as many people as it needs to be sent to.
Um.
Mayor, can I ask a question? It, when you got together with the other mayors last week, was it, was there a written document or was it just a statement?
There were both. Um, there was, there was a written letter. It kind of read like a, uh, I think I sent it to you guys.
Yeah.
It kind of read like a resolution with a bunch of whereas's and then, you know, called on them to honor the, uh, standards, you know, like not wear masks and sort of all these things honor the standards that Oregon law enforcement agencies have to meet. Um. Yeah. Yeah.
So my question is, have we done this to a certain degree already?
Well, I mean, that was more, I mean, there was certainly part of that was about ICE, but that was really more focused on the military intervention as opposed to ICE. I I'm a little surprised to hear the Council President say that this is the first time it's happened in Portland because I actually suspect it's, I mean, we've just, there have been so many accounts like this from other parts of the country. I, I can't imagine it's actually the first one in Portland, unfortunately. Um, on the other side of things, I will say that, you know, having spent my career in the immigration field, I know that first stories are not always completely true. And I, I, I did look at the Oregonian. I did look for other news sources today that were picking up this story, and I haven't seen it anywhere else yet. Um, but I might, you know, I mean, that could still happen. Obviously, it's early. It just came out this morning. Um, I'm supportive of sending out some kind of statement of indignation about ICE. Uh, you know, mistreatment of people. Um, and I guess, first off, there's some legal issues in this letter, but setting those aside, um, I guess I just don't know that I feel like this is the right one, the right. Yeah, way to go about it.
I can speak to a little bit. I revel in that question. This is one report of a case. How do we even write a letter about this that kind of acknowledges the inevitable kind of, th- this is an allegation. It's not clear and defined and right. Um, and I think that's why I tried to touch on, uh, in an edit to the letter, we changed the language to this, um, what this agency is alleged to have done. So I think trying to remove any implication that the agency is guaranteed to have done this, whether this is directed, that is guaranteed to have come from the secretary herself. I think I want to translate back from that. I think what I try and capture later on in the letter is outside of just this specific action. I think that there is a history of the way that this agency has just operated that I feel like is moral outside of the laws that we set forth in our nation to like constrain the way the government acts on the people. And I think that that is a really troubling history. Um, and that these actions just feel like an extension of that troubled history to me. And I think that it is escalation far outside what I would have expected. Um, but I I tried to write this letter in a way that isn't just grounded in what happened to Frank. That I think is the nexus for this and why it's important to write this now. Um, but I think it's also coming out that like through this agency, the federal government is trying to exert power on our community and on other communities across the United States. And I think that that is unacceptable. That's larger than just Frank's story. Frank's story is an important component of that. Um, but I really want to be able to track this stuff.
I will say that at the mayor's tables, um, I mean, I do think some cities have written some sort of, um, you know, have released statements. I mean, we did the one earlier this year, but maybe this summer as well as things kind of escalated. Uh, have written statements. In some ways, there is definitely a concern, uh, among the mayors about, you know, um, putting a target on our backs and the impact on, you know, federal funding and lots of things. That should we have sailed with the recent, um, you know, with the statement by all the mayors and with the, you know, sort of recent escalation of things in Portland with the administration. But I just want to put that out there that that is a concern I hear from, uh, a lot of mayors. Um, in fact, there were a couple who signed on to the, uh, statement participated that I was a little surprised because they had been much more reticent before, um, about, you know, the impact on their federal funding. Um, I guess, um, I don't know, because I'd like to hear from other people. Um, but I mean, I do have, I do think there are some things in the letter that are legally incorrect. Uh, all those citations don't stand for what you cite them for. Um, uh, so, um, yeah, I would, I would love to take some time and maybe rework this letter with you and bring it back next meeting. Um, but, uh, if you, um, can give some thought to, you know, whether it's Kristi Noem or whether it's a, whether it's a just a statement or a public, a press release, a public statement or something. I mean, I guess together that's your intent. It's if this letter goes out, then you follow it with the press, sending it to the press or somehow getting it out there. Yeah. Um. Yeah, other thoughts? Oh, sorry, so Councilor President.
Uh, it's, Mayor, I'm, I'm trying to put some edits in here. Um, I was equally just irate when I read the article this morning. Um, and I think that, um, I think it brings up a lot. I think it brings up, um, feelings of, um, some of the things we're seeing across the whole country. Um, I, um, I would love the opportunity for the council to reach out to Mr. Miranda before, um, before using his name and his experience in a letter. Um, I think that that, that would be most respectful. Um, but I, I worry about taking too much time, um, and massaging the the language too much so that we lose the, um, the urgency and the intensity of how it feels when something like this impacts one of our residents. And I'm using the word resident because in the article, it states that Mr. Miranda is a US citizen, but we're seeing this impact citizens and non-citizens alike and non-citizens who are here legally but happen to be, you know, black or brown. Um, all of these things are unacceptable and we, we have an opportunity to make a statement about all of these things. But, but I, I don't want to leave too much time, um, between this particular instance and a statement that we make, especially since she's just arriving in Portland, like within hours. Um.
Oh, is that your plan? You're going to go meet her?
No, we're.
And deliver your letter? Oh, were you?
I doubt.
I mean, I was.
This would get close, but. Um. So so I would, I'd be in favor of, um, moving forward with the approval to spend a little bit of time editing this letter. Send edits to Scott. We've done this before with letters where we'll send edits to Scott, um, with the intent that, you know, the final product would be something that we can all either all sign off on or we have the ability to pull our name from. Um, and then the timeline for that be that this would be released tomorrow. I I'd like to propose that. And I'm happy to put in some time to edit.
Do you guys think that works? I mean, as a legal matter?
I think you would have to call some kind of special meeting in order to review the collected edits, correct, Scott? Unless they, unless everyone was willing to authorize the use of their signature, having not collectively reviewed the edits.
Yeah, that's how it's worked before when the council signs off and it's just some tweaking. Uh, I don't know if that's the case here. I don't know how serious the tweaks are. Uh, there is a council retreat next week. I think you guys are gathering.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Yeah, um, that, that, if I could, that delay might also permit some additional reporting and also some contact with Mr. Miranda. Do we know if he's actually a Milwaukee resident or is he unincorporated?
It's a good question, yeah. Uh, he lives in Oakfield, so I put this in a specific way so it could say, um, community member, not necessarily Milwaukee resident. Um, but I think the point is, he's a member of the Milwaukee community. He sees Milwaukee on his own.
Yeah, I wa- I wasn't trying to imply anything otherwise. I was just curious, you know, how intimate would it be if we brought him in or some, somebody reached out? It was my only thought.
So if you know that, you've been in contact with the lawyer or something?
Nope, I just found this online. So I have this contact info online that we can reach out to, um, if we'd like to, um, and I think trying to find, I'd be brainstorming together. Like the best, wrong and third way we can reach out to them is, um, is I don't want to ever reach out to you. I don't want to make this more difficult. Um, I do think it's important to reach out directly and say just that we stand with them and that we're, um, open to.
Um, yeah, I, as long as we don't water it down. Um, I understand that the risk we take with the federal, I I I don't want to cover it in the theater, period. And the other thing is, is I I have, I have family members that are directly impacted by this, directly impacted by what's, what ICE is doing. And I feel like it's my duty to fight for them regardless of what that looks like. Um, you know, I I I'm not going to crouch him to, to, to this administration in any way. And I'm not saying anybody here is either, but I do feel like we have an obligation to meet the moment right now. Um, and that if, if, if a letter like this is, is, is step one, then so be it. But I I'm not interested in, in watering it down, um, out of fear of retribution. That is not how I, I want to.
Yeah, I mean, I think I ultimately agree with that. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that was, you know, a concern raised in, in many rural circles. I think I agree. We do, I, I, I wouldn't want to not. I think I agree. We do, I, I, I wouldn't want to not issue a statement or, you know, engage in some way. Um, I, I mean, I think, you know, irrespective of Mr. Miranda, um, we may want a, a statement. I mean, if we talk to his lawyer or talk to him and find out they don't want the added attention. I will say, I was at, uh, the ICE building yesterday. I was, or while I was nearby, I drove past, but I was nearby because I'm actually, uh, I'm sponsoring, I helped, I helped write a letter of sponsorship for Venezuela, a Venezuelan woman who was released, um, from custody last week, allowed to pursue her asylum, um, her asylum case. So, I mean, I've, I've, uh, I've been in, I've been over there a fair amount lately and I've seen it. So, um, yeah. I don't, yeah, anyway. Um, there's, uh, yeah.
I'm Counselor Mast. You haven't been heard from much.
There's a lot here. I guess I'm, um, boring to go with the public statement uh, rather than let her to know because I, I think it just might get more coverage, I guess. Um, I, I, I just kind of want us to not, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it like the others have said, but at the same time, I just don't want to make any, you know, unforced factual errors either.
Um, I have a diverging path we can choose to take. I do agree with Counselor Severn who's pointing to, I would love to get this finished tonight. We can get something out tomorrow. And I think that there's this urgency here, um, for our community to see really a quick response to this. Uh, and I think we can release future statements if we need, we can follow up as needed and, um, as we desire, but I think that working something out here tonight is a good course of action. If the virgin paths, if we want to continue to include reference to Frank specifically, we can leave the letter as is. If we think it's more appropriate to remove reference to Frank after we've contacted him, we could remove his name, the first paragraph and just say unlawfully detained, US citizen, member of our community, and then delete the second paragraph that specifically references, um, his case. So it's then referencing in more vague terms, um, Frank's case and then talking more about just the nature of how ICE has been organized these days. Um, I think that's one option. I still think it's, I think, and I'm trying to be wrong here, um, I think it's okay to say we support Frank after what we've seen, to put out a statement that directly kind of affirms the story, um, that we've read the Willamette Week, um, and then follow up with Frank. Um, but people feel like it's better not to reference him directly. Um, I think I'd be okay cutting the portion and just alluding more vaguely to his story. Um, but I think there's power in saying his name and talking about what happened.
Well, given that his lawyer released that letter presumably to the Willamette Week, um, you know, maybe they want attention to the story, but I guess it would feel better to have a conversation with his lawyer.
That's what I was going to say. I know we want to get this done tonight, get it out tomorrow. But if it's going to be more powerful, I mean, what we could do this too is, is we can hold off on the letter, come out with a statement. And then once we have more facts around Mr. Miranda, then send that letter within a day or two.
Yeah. Maybe what we could do is we finish the letter tonight, we contact Mr. Miranda's lawyer tomorrow, um, and then just get confirmation from his lawyer that they're okay with us sending out a statement. And I think we can totally, we don't have to change the substance of the letter at all to delete the first, um, dear Secretarial.
I have some edits.
Yeah.
Are you, are you open to reading the letter? Okay. Um, so I'm just going to read through it, um, without noting the pieces that have removed. Just going to read through it and see if there's anything that gives you pause. Um, as the elected city council of Milwaukee, Oregon, we add our voices to the national condemnation in the strongest possible terms, the actions of the federal immigration and customs enforcement agents. And it's a little clunky, but, um, today we read reports of a Milwaukee area resident and US citizen who was abducted unlawfully and unlawfully detained. What we are seeing across the country is not an isolated mistake. These are abuses of power, violations of the constitution, and acts of state section violence. Details of this case will continue to develop, but the facts remain that across our nation, plain clothed and masked ICE agents are confronting seizing our neighbors without cause, detaining them for hours without answers to questions, and even after they've proved or provided proof of US citizenship. This is not law enforcement. It is unlawful kidnapping, harassment, and abuse carried out, carried out by federal officers acting outside their legal authority. ICE's actions in this case fit squarely within a long and shameful pattern of unconstitutional behavior by the agency. From the retaliatory targeting of those who speak out against the agency's abuses, the warrantless detentions to the separations of children from their families at the border, ICE has repeatedly violated civil rights of law-abiding people and intentionally ignored the limits of its own authority. These are not Wunoff incidents. There are some symptoms of an agency that has been empowered to abandon accountability and sees itself above the law. These behaviors, pattern of unlawful activity is not just unconstitutional, it is immoral. It represents an affront to the basic values of our nation and to this community. Dignity of the individual, compassion for our neighbors, fairness under the law, and respect for human life. For years, ICE's actions have inflicted fear and suffering on families and communities, undermining the moral fabric of the country it is supposed to serve. And let us be clear, this conduct is unacceptable. Your agency must face institutional accountability for its repeated violations of the constitution until ICE can demonstrate adherence to the constitution, transparency in its operations, and respect for the people it serves. It has no moral or legal legitimacy to operate in our communities.
I think that is really good. You are able to take the case that we saw, not necessarily reference Frank's name. I think we can follow up and do that after we contact him. I think it's still really powerful. Um, the only small piece that I have is, um, there, there are two parts here, really small semantic. Um, this, there are symptoms of an agency that has abandoned accountability and sees itself above the law. I don't know if I like the word empowered there. I'm trying to do a, like, another verb there that implies some type of, like, extraction. Um, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
And then I also, with the last, or with the second to last paragraph, this conduct is not welcome in Milwaukee. I like the statement kind of referencing Milwaukee there, but I also understand, like, there's some, as you read that, I was thinking to myself, is it only Milwaukee then that we're saying where it's unacceptable? Or does that apply to other spots?
Right.
But I want to show our residents that, like, yes, because I, I don't know. To me, it kind of goes without saying, we don't accept this anywhere in our nation. We're saying it's unconstitutional. But I also need to show that, like, in Milwaukee, we uniquely reject this. Like, this is us. Taking a firm stance. I don't know.
When, when I read it, um, I felt like it was unnecessarily small because this is, I mean, certainly I don't mean to diminish the experience of this community member, um, but also we're seeing patterns of this across the entire country. And I think the power of, um, the words of elected officials needed to, to, um, add weight to the words of resistance across the country and not just be limited to their own jurisdiction. So I'm open, I'm open to edits on that, but I think it should be more than just Milwaukee.
Well, I agree with that general point. And I guess I was able to follow you at the beginning and I liked definitely the way you began it. Not sure I was able to follow it all, um, all the way through. So I look forward to getting it in writing. Um, the one legal question I'll tell you that is, um, the reference to warrantless detentions. So actually ICE doesn't need a warrant to detain people. Uh, and that case that's cited there, and, and it hasn't for decades. If they, if they have reasonable suspicion that a person's not a legal resident, they don't get a warrant.
How do you even determine versus flowing?
Uh, no, it's detention. It's the, it's not, to enter their dwelling, you, you have to have their permission or you have to have.
They're blowing on the scores and no, it's not the case.
Right. I'm just saying as a legal matter, using the word, or that's, that opinion that's cited there is an opinion about whether states, uh, lawmakers, the officers have to detain people for ICE, and that's a very different question. So I would just strike warrantless detentions because getting into what that means and what the legality of it is, is, you know, that's, um, and yeah, I mean, there are other problems. I mean, these cases don't really stand for what they're cited for, so I would drop all the citations. But I think if you drop the warrantless detention, um, and you drop the, the citations, I think, you know, the rest of that is, is abuse or illegal.
Yeah. I'm trying to drop warrantless detention and the citations I included just to, I felt like I was making bold statements. Um, but right, and people can dig into that if they'd like. Um, and, uh, yeah.
Um, so if we took the citations out, but changed unwarranted to unsubstantive, is that a word? It's too late. I think it's, I think it's important to say that people are being detained without the, without the, um, without using the, well, wrongly and without the context that is, um, that is culturally expected in, you know, not culturally.
Well, I think if you just say wrongly detained, wrongly detained, that's okay. Because that's, I mean, that's, that catches a lot of things that, you know.
So I think I've, I think I've gathered all of this. Um, what I'd like to do is send the copy of the edits to the council president and to Scott and see if, I mean, or do you want me to send it to all of us tonight? I know that we're coming up on a deadline for time here. I think that, um, you're correctly wrong, Scott and Justin. I mean, I think if, if you don't want to wait until another scheduled meeting, you would need to say today, you're, you're comfortable putting your signature on it because there will not be another time for us to have a conversation. Even you replying to an email and saying, I'm good with it, is, is a violation of the public meeting law. So, um, I think you have a couple of options. I think, um, you could vote to extend this meeting because you're going to do that in seven minutes. Um, Counselor Stavon Jordan could send it to Scott. You could pull it up here and we could just get, get it done. Or you can say generally, I'm okay, um, put my signature on, Scott format it in the morning and send it off. Or decide that you're going to discuss it again next Tuesday. And there is nothing to stop any of you from ever making individual statements in your position as counselors, um, ever. So.
I really don't think there's anything that would change to become this letter that would make me take my name off, it period. So, I'm fucking.
Well, I'd like to see the latest drafts of when you did this, when you made plans to extend the meeting.
I'll move to extend the meeting.
My second.
All those who thought it was moving in second, you guys.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Hey.
What point of orders? There's typically a.
Times.
Till, until tomorrow.
Eleven. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, let's. It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting till 11:00 PM. May not take that long, but let's go ahead and do that. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, unheard, that's unanimously, meeting is extended. And then maybe, um, if Counselor Stavon Jordan could send her revision around to everyone. Okay. Well, then let's take a, let's take 10 minutes for people to have a look at that and come back at five after.
Are you recessing or just?
We are recessing.
But then we'll be out of a public meeting. So you probably just want to sit on the dais and just take calls if we're still in a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Still, you don't lose the opportunity to talk to each other.
Yours.
It's probably.
You just extended the meeting, but we can't take a recess?
You can, but then you lose your ability to talk to each other about the letter you're writing.
Well, no, I wanted to have 10 minutes quiet and concentrate on it. That's what I want.
Got it. Got it.
Got it.
So you're, you're, we're in recess.
We're in recess for 10 minutes. We're in recess for ten minutes.
We are on, we are on air, Mayor Beatty, we're on air. I'm showing Mayor Beatty's version of it.
I said I love plural.
Can't edit it on the, on the dais, right?
Right.
It's your favorite, you're getting all your favorite things.
On the dais, on committee. Saying expletives on the air, cats and dogs.
You've gotten it all in tonight.
I know.
All your faves.
The trifecta of public service.
I think if we're going to start to be really small then, the national condemnation in the strongest possible terms. Of the actions, do we need to add of there? As we add in.
We add our, the national condemnation of, yeah. Of the first, second line.
Um.
Yeah, of the actions, second line, strongest possible terms.
Of actions, oh sorry, so not.
In the strongest possible terms of.
Yep, and so. I would say. Of. As opposed to reports of a Milwaukee area resident, I think we can say of a member of our community. And then it's still, because the nuance of like.
That makes sense.
Blood is unincorporated, we cannot kind of dodge with that. I'd say, keep, I'd U S citizen, I would just say, we read reports of a member of our community in U S citizen.
That's good. And then in the second paragraph, we need to also put periods after U S.
Yeah, need to be consistent, because generally, yep, with periods.
Well, uh, here the CDs, uh, we're writing solids. We, we, oh, we, I guess we lost it here, so what I would suggest is that this is the first place we say U S. Oh, it went up here, so actually, maybe we spell it out. And then it's, we don't use periods. After.
Well, that'd be.
There are a lot of really strong feelings about that, and I would. But we don't use the periods.
I would tell you in immigration parlance, it's always got the periods, yeah.
Your counsel, you can tell me to do what you want, would you put the periods back in?
Can we add that to the retreat agenda?
I want it, want it noted in my branding. Counsel directed me to do that.
Yeah. In the first, in the last line of the first paragraph, the other edit I was suggesting that is over there in that comment bubble is. Adding word systematic, these are systematic.
Yeah.
These are.
No, it's still my systematic. It's a different, um, active voice.
I would add and before detaining in the second paragraph, I think it makes it read a little bit clearer. The details of this case will continue to develop with the facts remained that across the nation, plainclothes and masked ICE agents. Um, are confronting seizing our neighbors without cause and detaining them for hours. Without answers to questions and you can have it provided with U S citizens.
Yep.
I get that?
Okay.
Yeah.
And then my other one was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really liked that ending sentence.
I mean, that's your sentence, I just don't think that institutional accountability sentence adds anything. And I kind of like stopping it, this conduct is unacceptable, period.
Yeah.
And then till ICE can be administered, yeah, so that's, um, suggested.
Yeah, awesome, alright.
There's, oh, there's one last comment, and I don't know where I would leave this, I never do.
Removing the citations.
Yep. Um, one change that I had, and I'm fine if we don't do this, at the start, I think it's, reads a little bit cleaner. If we just say as elected city council, we can again in the strongest possible terms, or like. Or like join others in condemning in the strongest possible terms, but add our, like to add our voices adds words, but we can't keep it. We.
International condemnation.
Huh.
I think he's wanting the active verb of condemn. We condemn.
Yeah, we condemn.
We condemn as opposed to condemnation. Okay. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that's it. Yeah. So what? We condemn. Oh, so.
We condemn.
We condemn. Oh, um, I think on the second last paragraph, when we say, if we say these pattern, these behaviors and pattern unlawful activity. I think, um, I think it's stronger if we say this is not just unconstitutional, it is immoral. But I'm fine to do, I think that's just a stylistic choice. And I'm going to do this.
I'm sorry. I didn't follow.
Uh, to say, right now, these behaviors and pattern of unlawful activity is not just unconstitutional, it is immoral. I think it's more powerful to say, this is not just unconstitutional, it is immoral.
Oh. You're saying inserting the word just?
Uh.
Is that the change?
No, deleting the. Yep.
Oh, I see. Oh, yeah.
That's stronger.
That's stronger.
And then, yeah, I think this is a good spot. For next steps, we make these edits. I think it, I do like how it's still. Addressed Secretary Noem. I like we, we send this out. Um, we can follow up with Frank's attorney and see if we can provide them this statement. And say we're open to starting a dialogue, see how we can support you. Are there other things we should say? And appropriate Frank's attorney?
I would say that, sure. I mean, um, I mean, they're, you know.
Who wants us to go out here and contact the president?
I think so, yeah. Now that we've removed reference to Frank specifically, I think it's okay to send out tomorrow morning. Um, but still as a next step to contact Frank, um, and see. Just starting that dialogue.
Maybe this.
Uh, who else? Asking.
Put on that.
Yeah, I guess that's, that seems like the right course of action, I think. By the way, we want to find out. Yeah.
I would make the contact through his lawyer. I wouldn't try to contact him directly.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. And his lawyer looks like he's easy to find. He's got his website, his underdog, underdog law. He's also with a firm. I looked him up. He's with a firm and he does this management for a firm and then this is underdog law.
Yeah. Um, thanks for taking the initiative to put this together.
Yeah, thank you all for your edits.
Appreciations to everybody for staying a little bit later to get this out. Just to confirm, so you'd like Scott to send this to Secretary Noem's office?
Yep.
That's the transmittal plan?
Do we want the CCs? Do we want a CC?
Yeah.
I mean.
We could see, I like the radio, we could see CC the Willamette Week, we could see CC.
You could see your delegation. You could see Biden, Berkeley.
Yeah. Our.
Our rep.
Yeah. Uh. I like Robert's Oregonian. We could see see other outlets as well. We could see see.
Did you say the entire congressional delegation or just our representatives?
I think it's Murphy, Whitey, and Biden. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Okay, that's that one. Any other council reports?
I would just ask that I send out the, um, agenda for next week's retreat as well as a very, very short, it should take you 30 seconds, uh, pre-survey. A little look really similar because you took it last year too. We're gonna see how things have changed. Please take that. Um, I will plug you a lot if you now and want to take that.
Um, I did want to bring up one other. I have a bunch of LOC notes, but I think I will put them in writing, um, as opposed to, um, doing them on the dais. Um. I did want to bring up the, uh. Emma mentioned the Rotary Dinner, uh, coming up the night before the Rotary Dinner, I believe, is the Street Trust Dinner honoring Abghamba. Um, hopefully he's, I assume people heard that he's had some medical setbacks lately, but, um, hopefully he's gonna be able to participate. Yeah, he broke his hip.
He was, he was hit by a car because he biked back from the ICE protestor.
Oh, was he hit by a car?
He was hit by a car. So.
Wow, I didn't know that part of it.
For those who say we don't need to see her streets.
Wow. Um, anyway, um, I'm planning to go and I thought I would just mention it for others who might be inclined to go. Um. The 16th, 16th. Oh, are we all attending? This is yours, really. Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, anything else? By the way, council reports. All right. Uh, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved secondly to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Your turn.